Okay. Good morning. The meeting on the Committee on Health is now called so other. May we all stand for the opening prayer.
invocation. God of our creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy above all else. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for this wonderful morning, an opportunity that we have been given today, to gather together and discuss what has been laid down before us. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meetings. Productivity and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this year. All this we ask in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the calling of the role.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chairman Aho. May I respectfully move that we dispense with the calling of the role. So move. Any second? I'll second. Uh. There's a motion and I duly seconded uh for to dispense with the calling of the role. He uh he uh objection, the same is carried. Uh next is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Honorable Ako. May I respectfully move for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. So move, Mr. Chair. And I duly second it. Um there's a duly seconded uh to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the approval of the same. In objection, the same is approved.
Good morning, everyone. The chair would like to recognize the following distinguished members who are here present. Uh. Um. Physically present today is um the chairman of the Committee on Transportation and uh uh representing the Second District of Antipolo City, Honorable Romeo Ako. Thank you very much. And on Zoom, we have Vice Chair Peter Miguel of this Second District of South Cotabato. Honorable Harris Christopher Ong Chuon of the Second District of Northern Samar. Honorable Emma Marilin Wanor Dizon of the Long District of Mandawi. Honorable Delibitsi Kahayunu of the Second District of Kalaukan City. Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar of the Sixth District, Kason City. Honorable Maria Angela Garcia of the Third District, Bataan. Honorable Bonifacio Bosita of One Rider Party List. Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon of the Long District of Sarangani. Um. Honorable and Vice Chair Christine Alexis Chutol of the Third District of Bohol. Honorable Florida Rita Robes of the Long District of San Jose del Monte City. Honorable Lani Mercado Revilla of the Second District of Cavite. Honorable Joseline Tulfo of the Party List ACSIIS. Honorable Ernesto Junissi Junior of the First District of Manila. Senior Vice Chair Honorable Anthony Rolando Gores Junior of Party List Malasakit Bayanihan. Uh. Honorable Romeo Romeo King Pena Junior of the First District of Makati City. Uh Honorable Jeremy Jet Nsai of Party List Pursong Pinoy. Honorable Marisa Delmar Maxino of the Party List OFW. Honorable Larnilavin Roque of the First District of Bukinon. Honorable Delahio Rodriguez of the Long District of Catanduanes. Honorable JC Avalos of the Party List for Peace. Honorable Ramon Jolo of the First District of Cavite. Honorable James Jojo Ahm Junior of the Party List Oswak Ilango. Honorable Charis Ann Hernandez of the Long District of Calamba City. Berkeley of Party List Agri. Majority Leader Wilper Palma of the First District of Sambuanka Zip. Vice Chair Maria Rachel Arenas of the Third District of Pangasinan. Honorable Doris Manikis of the Second District of Sambakas. Ordinas of the Party List Senior Citizens. Senior citizens. Honorable Adrian J. Advincula of the Third District of Cavite. Honorable Ricardo Cruz Junior of the First District of Tagi Pateros. Honorable Eugeni Vincente Imano of the Second District of Misanes, Misanes Oriental. Uh Honorable Rose Mariana Hernandez of the Second District of Laguna. Honorable Dante Garcia of the Second District of Lawunyon. Honorable Salvador Prieto of the Sixth District of Bulakan. Honorable Bailey Alvargas Alfonso of the Second District, Kadayan. Honorable Cristoferson Cocuyap of the Second District, Sarden Leite. Honorable Carmelo John Lesatín II of the First District, Pampanga. Um. Honorable and Vice Chairperson of Party List Anak Kalusugan Ray Florence T. Reyes. And Honorable Maria Carmen Zamora of the First District of Davao de Oro. Davao de Oro. And Honorable Maria Amiga Catherine Agarow of the Fourth District of Laguna. Thank you very much. Um. May we now call the concept to acknowledge the our distinguished and esteemed resource person for this meeting this morning.
Okay. Thank you, sir. May we acknowledge the presence of the following resource persons from the Department of Health, Director Pearl Gimbarda, Director Maria Joyce Lucusin, Director Bernadette Velasco, Director Cheryl Devino, and Director Melissa Serna. From the Food and Drug Administration, we have with us Ms. Lynette Karabin and Ms. Vanessa Legasto. From the Department of Trade and Industry, with us is um President and CEO of PITC, Ms. Emma Lisa Docmody Perez Chong. From the Department of National Defense, with us is Attorney Angulito Castillo. And from the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Gian Cabatana. From the Department of Social Welfare and Development, PSWD, with us is ASEK Irene Bidumlaw. From the National Nutrition Council, with us is ASEK and Executive Director, Dr. Assiserna M. Belangirang. From the Bureau of Department of Agriculture, with us is Ms. Mary Grace Mangidna, Assistant Director. From the Department of Agrarian Reform, Mr. Renner Reyes, Director. From the Department of Education, um Ms. Maria Cordam C. Dunglao. From the Bureau of Department of Labor and Employment, with us is Ms. Maria Ruin Belvira. From the National Economic and Development Authority, with us is Ms. Dorothy Camille Betabali. And from the Council for Welfare of Children, we have Attorney Sheila Balbastro. And lastly, from the Akrusan Donata Provincial Hospital, we have the Chief of Hospital, Dr. Abelio Rifefera. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um. Again, good morning, distinguished colleagues and esteemed guests. In the agenda of the committee meeting for today are two bills of national significance and some local bills of equal importance. Um first on the agenda are bills providing for the stockpiling of critical drugs and medicines, creating for the purpose of health procurement and stockpiling under the Department of Health. The very title of the proposed measures indicates its importance in strengthening our country's preparedness in case of public health emergencies. This legislation, if enacted into law, is a critical policy reform that will complement the other measures that the committee has already reported out and was subsequently approved on third reading. Specifically, the bills on the Centers for Disease Prevention and Control, the Virology and Vaccine Research Institute, as well as the bill establishing the Health Emergency Auxiliary Reserve Team or HART. For the information of this honorable body, the proposed measure providing for the stockpiling of critical drugs and medicines was already extensively deliberated upon by the Committee on Health in the Eighteenth Congress. It was subsequently approved by the House on third reading and was transmitted to the Senate. Unfortunately, the Senate was not able to consider it. Copies of the bills and the matrix relative thereto have been distributed to all members of the committee. The chair shall now recognize first the authors who will deliver their sponsorship speech. Um before we proceed, I would like to acknowledge the presence on Zoom of Honorable Mi- Miilikuwa of the Long District of Quirino. Um. Honorable Harris Christopher Ong Chuon, author of House Bill Number 4153, is now recognized.
Uh good morning, Mr. Chair. Uh thank you. Good morning, my distinguished colleagues and our resource person for today. Uh, Mrs. Chair, I move that my explanatory note be adopted as my sponsorship speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Ong Chuon. Um. Um. For House Bill Number uh 284 by uh Vice Chair Kiss Micaton Mike Tan, are you on board? Congressman Honorable Tan. If, if not, may we ask Honorable Ako uh for on behalf of the Honorable Kiss Micah, Mike the Ertan. My respectfully move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 284 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Ako. For House Bill Number uh 7247, um is Honorable Rudix Caesar Fariñas on board? If not, may yes, Honorable Ako.
Uh. For on behalf of the Honorable Rudix Caesar Fariñas the first, uh may I move that the the explanatory note of House Bill Number 7247 uh be considered the sponsorship speech of the author. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ako. Um. May we now hear uh the remarks, comments from the our resource person. Uh Dr. Lucusin, uh or Director Gumbarda is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um a pleasant morning to all of us, Mr. Chairperson, and to all the honorable members of the Committee on Health. So with regards to these proposed house bills, the Department of Health pactologies the intention, the noble intention of the proponents of these house bills, that is to uh for the creation of the Health Procurement Stockpiling Bureau or the bureau that would ensure the ready availability of health commodities, critical health commodities uh in times of public health emergencies. Um. In line with this, Mr. Chairperson and your honors, may the Department of Health be allowed to be given sufficient time to to uh submit our official uh statements pending the result of our ongoing organizational development, which is uh what we are doing right now uh in line with the mandate for the DOAGE to study its structural organization for the right sizing, your honors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh Director Gumbarda. Do we have a timeline on uh on when can you uh finish the preparation?
Yes, Your Honor, I was just advised that the uh uh the result of the ongoing evaluation of our organizational development will have to happen by the end of this month, your honors. So if it can be given that by the end of this year, sorry, your honors.
The end of this year? Uh. Can with two months or three months be enough?
Yes, Your Honor, we will try to uh to fast track, no, this uh this the result po of this organizational development, your honors.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Ako. The, the uh, lest the Department of Health have the uh Health Procurement and Stockpiling Bureau now? You don't have that?
Uh Honorable Gumbarda, uh Director Gumbarda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, your honors. Currently, uh the Department of Health has an existing offices that uh already caters to the stockpiling of health commodities as well as um to ensure that these health commodities are strategically located within, throughout the country, your honors. So that's one considerations that we have in mind. Hence, we uh would actually need some time to process these house bills on whether or not we can incorporate this proposed uh creation of a new office in our currently existing organizational structure, your honors. Thank you.
May we now hear a comment from the Department of Trade and Industry? Anyone from the Department of Trade and Industry?
Sir, good morning.
Uh please identify yourself, ma'am.
Sir, good morning. This is Dr. Emmy Lisa Perez Chong, the President and CEO of the Philippine International Trading Corporation.
Please proceed, uh Ma'am Chong.
Sir, good morning to uh the Committee on the of Health. Sir, uh the DTI maintains its position that the PITC as the sole and state trading arm of the government would like to participate in being the stockpiling bureau or office that will help in the uh in the realization of this act. Since I believe that we are the only state trading company and the state trading arm of the government, we are very much into the import exports of things, whether it be medical consumables or medicines because we have the PPP, PPPI, which is under also the DTI. And this will help also to have an available stock for whatever emergencies the country would be experiencing in the next or in the future. And we are already existing, so we don't need to create a bureau that will handle this. And we would just to, we would just need to empower more our office with this kind of additional mandate. Thank you, your honors.
Uh just for clarification, are you supporting the bill, uh Madam Chong?
Yes, sir. The DTI is all supporting this, but instead of creating another bureau from the DOH, uh we would reiterate the purpose of PITC as the sole trading arm of the government. And this will be also in support for the right sizing, that we will be able to maximize all the offices of the government.
Okay, uh thank you. Uh. Any comments from the Department of Health?
Mr. Chair, your honors. Um we recognize, your honors, that to ensure the availability of health commodities is not the sole responsibility of the Department of the DOAGE, no. So we welcome the uh if PITC would also undertake uh for the stockpiling of health commodities to better respond to public health emergencies, especially since uh there are other health facilities owned by, operated by the local government units and other entities that would really be of help at ensuring that we have sufficient uh health commodities in times of public emergencies, your honors. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Director Gumbarda. Um. From the Department of National Defense, um Attorney Castillo.
Uh yes, Mr. Chair, your honors. Good morning to everyone. Uh in, on the part of the Defense Department, Mr. Chair, we are in full support on the rationale on the establishment of the Health Procurement Stockpiling Bureau to effectively address any future public health emergencies. On our position, Mr. Chair, I think it will be more prudent that it should be the DOH having the technical expertise to have a control on the matter, Mr. Chair, your honors. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Castillo. From the Department of Budget and Management, um Ms. Gian Kabata, Kabat? Kabatana.
Good morning, Chair and to the members of the committee. I am Gian Lara Kabatania from Department of Budget and Management, Budget Information Legislative Service. On the onset, we would like to note that our technical staff is still in the process of gathering information and data as regards to this proposed bill. For our initial finding as to the creation of the Health Procurement and Stockpiling Bureau, we initially deferred to the Department of Health as to the viability of this proposal, considering that currently they have two offices that is responsible for stockpiling of medical supplies in the department, namely the Procurement Service and the Supply Chain Management Service. On our second point, as to the appropriations provision, we concur that the funding provision of this measure shall be charged against the current year's appropriations of the Department of Health. Thereafter, such as may be necessary for the continued implementation shall be included in the annual general appropriations. We would be submitting our official DBM position once it is cleared by our principal. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Ms. Kabatana. Uh. From the Department of Social Welfare and Development, uh ASEK Irene Dumlaw. ASEK Dumlaw.
Answer in a while po para tingnan po si ASEK Dumlaw.
Uh at this point, we'd like to acknowledge the physical presence of Honorable Larnilavin Roque of the Long District of Bukinon. Thank you very much. And on Zoom, uh we'd like to acknowledge the presence of um Honorable Eleanor Bridock Begtang from the Long District of Apayao. Uh Honorable Ron Pinzalo of the Party List Kabayan. Uh and Honorable Angelica Natasha Kong, uh and Vice Chairperson, uh of Party List BHW. Thank you very much. Um. Uh ASEK Dumlaw, are you ready? We'd like to acknowledge also the presence on Zoom uh of Honorable Luisa Loren Quaresma uh of the Long District of Neva, Viscaia. Um may we hear from the Food and Drug Administration, Ms. Lynette Karabin? Or Ms. Vanessa Legasto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Ms. Karabin.
Thank you po. The Food and Drug Administration fully supports the proposed bills for the stockpiling of strategic and critical drugs and medicines, vaccines, and devices for public health emergencies, thus ensuring and facilitating the provision of life-saving drugs, including vaccines, devices, and materials in times of public health emergencies. However, as DOH has manifested, we request more time to provide our official position paper. That's all, your honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh Madam Karabin. ASEK Dumlaw, um. You are waiting?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and to the members of the committee.
Let's please proceed.
Yeah, uh thank you very much, Mr. Chairperson. Form most, we would like to apologize for coming in late as we had a separate meeting with the secretary. Nonetheless, we would like to express our gratitude for inviting the Department of Social Welfare and Development as a resource person in this meeting. Uh we would like to express that the department recognizes that nutrition and healthcare needs are fundamental rights, particularly of the vulnerable and the marginalized sectors, especially during emergencies and disasters. Likewise, we acknowledge that the provision of a comprehensive support is needed to address prevalent nutritional problems. The DSWD as the Vice Chairperson for Disaster Response and Lead Agency for the Food and Nonfood Items Cluster under the Response pillar of the agency is mandated to lead the disaster response operation, sort of food and nonfood items, which are valuable commodities for internally displaced persons for their survival, health and well-being of the internally displaced persons as well. As much as a family with bats um will uh are provided by the DSWD is our, as earlier stated, but we recognize that medical supplies such as medicine would also be important, especially for our IDPs in evacuation centers who are severely affected by disasters and other catastrophes. Um we believe that uh we have to coordinate with the Department of Health and other agencies for this matter. Uh likewise, the department also is implementing the sustainable, uh the supplementary feeding program that provides food to children enrolled in child development centers and supervised neighborhood play. Aside from that, we have also partnered with the Department of Health for the implementation of the Philippine multisectoral nutrition project to harmonize the delivery of nutrition-specific and nutrient, nutrition-sensitive interventions to reduce standing in targeted localities around the country. What we're trying to say here, Mr. Chair, and to the members of the committee, is that the department is really committed in addressing nutritional concerns of the poor, the vulnerable, and the marginalized. And we would also like to ensure that the nutritional requirements of our targeted beneficiaries would be met and would be supplied by the department. And likewise, the other requirements that would supplement what we are currently providing them would also be given. So again, the department would like to reiterate our support for the proposed legislative measures as it ensures inclusiveness during crisis, even to the vulnerable in terms of their nutrition and healthcare needs. Um the department has earlier submitted a position paper on these measures, but we will be submitting a supplemental to update the position paper that was previously submitted. That is it for the department, Mr. Chair, and we thank you for this opportunity. Good morning.
Thank you very much, uh. Thank you very much, uh, Director for your comments on nutrition, but we are discussing at present the uh bill on health procurement and stockpiling. Uh, but anyway, we will take note of your position, uh, Asek Dumlaw. Uh, questions and remarks? Mister Chair?
Yes, uh, Honorable.
Honorable Akop. May I know if uh from our resource persons, uh, if their, their comments and positions are exactly the same when this bill was taken up or tackled in the Eighteenth Congress? Uh, from the Department of Health?
Mister Chair, your honors, so uh the response would be the same. However, that would be subject to, of course, the ongoing organizational development that we're currently having within the DOH, so um we will be uh uh submitting our official uh position on this House bill as soon as possible, your honors.
So you are saying that you are essentially, uh, you have essentially have changed your position as in your position in the Eighteenth Congress, uh, Director Gumbarda?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, your honors. Um, I was just informed that we will be having the same um positions that we had uh during the Eighteenth Congress, your honors. Thank you.
Uh, Honorable Akop?
Mister Chair, I am asking this question simply because uh this bill uh was passed by the Eighteenth Congress up to third reading, and we have a rule in the House under Section forty-eight that uh that in case of bills or resolutions uh land fighters priority measure for the House, which were previously filed in the immediately preceding Congress and have been approved on third reading, the same may be disposed of as matters already reported upon the approval of majority of the members of the committee present, there being a call of Mister Chair. So, Mister Chair, uh, if there are no, shall I say, violent objections from the source, uh, resource person as so far as this bill is considered, I think it is incumbent upon the members of this committee to follow section, the rule, uh, Section forty-eight, Mister Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Akop. Before we will act on the uh the manifestation of Honorable Akop, we would like to hear from the Department of Trade and Industry, uh, uh, under Secretary, uh, Chong?
Yes, your honor. Uh, although DTI maintains its position regarding the stockpiling, but we would like to inform also the committee that under E O one-two-zero, in which P I T C is the sole uh implementing agency, with this, whatever we import, the government, more than fifty million and above, the government gets an additional five percent of the half of the A B C. So this means that the Philippine government will maximize its money that has been appropriated for a certain procurement. And this is uh not a very well-known E O, but we have already agencies who has experiencing the benefits of this counter-trade program in which P I T C is the sole implementing agency. And I would like to introduce this to all of the agencies that we have in the country that we will be able to maximize the appropriated funds that has been uh uh given by the government to the different agencies.
Mister Chair? Yes, Honorable Akop. The, the P I T C cites an executive order, but if we look, the funds are located to the different agencies uh are pursuant to a law, the government appropriations act. May I ask P I T C, can an E O supersede approbation of law provided in the GA?
Yes, uh, your honor, yes, it's not, uh, of course, the provisions in the GA are, are, are more important than an E O. However, the E O is just a implementation of the counter-trade program. So if there are things that we have to import because of uh stockpiling issues, then uh the counter-trade says that if we have an allocation, for example, of medicines or medical consumables that is not available in the country, then the government gets another fifty percent of the half of the A B C with a minimum amount of fifty million. Uh, that's the only thing that I want to uh inform the committee, sir. Thank you.
Mister Chair? Uh, yes, Honorable Akop. Uh, as I've said, the law takes uh precautions over an executive order. If a, if a fund or a certain amount of fund is allocated to a certain department, for all intents and purposes, they have the capability to uh procure these items. If they are not able to procure this, this critical items stated in the bills, then maybe the P I T C can come in. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Akop. Uh, before we proceed, we'd like to uh acknowledge um uh the members who are physically present this morning. Uh, earlier they were on Zoom, so now I would like to welcome Honorable Maria Angela Garcia of the Third District of uh Batan and Honorable uh uh Bambi Imano of the Second District of Misa Mis Oriental. Thank you very much for your presence. Um. From the members?
Mister Chair?
Uh. Yes, uh, Honorable Marisa Delmar?
Yes, uh, good morning, Mister Chair, to our resource people, to our colleagues. Uh, first of all, I would like to have some clarifications only before the committee approves the bill, because there is also a need to consolidate the various bills to a substitute bill on which you may, uh, I will make a motion for. In twenty-twenty-two, it was revealed in a hearing of the Senate Committee on Health that twenty-point-seven million doses of COVID-nineteen vaccines expired, resulting to billions of pesos in wasted government funds. The wastage nearly bridged the who, uh, ten percent threshold of unacceptable wastage. By twenty-twenty-three po, there are forty-four million doses of expired COVID-nineteen vaccines, and the problem now is how to dispose them properly because of the potential risk they pose to our public health and safety. With regards to storage facilities, the good O I C of our D O H was even quoted as saying that it is not that easy to set up storage facilities because we should also think about safety, quality, and how to preserve the potency of vaccines that will be placed there. I'm question po, Mister Chair. Given this dismal, with due respect, uh, experience with COVID-nineteen vaccines, how can we be assured that uh the capability of our very own D O H to handle all other critical drugs and essential medicines that are needed, not only during the public health emergencies in the future, but other medical supplies that need to be stockpiled and properly stored to avoid wastages and ensure uh sufficient supply, Mister Chair? My first question po.
Uh, anyone from uh the Department of Health? Uh, yes, Director DuCuzin?
Good morning, uh, Mister Chair and the honorables. With regards to the vaccine, uh, COVID-nineteen uh vaccines uh that we have uh issued as to the reported restage, first and foremost, I would like to uh inform the body that the vaccines that were, the COVID vaccines, were new vaccines. And uh it has its uh identified uh shelf lives. And even with that, uh, there were also uh extensions of its shelf life based on the emergency uh uh use authorization. So, um, the reported before the vaccines were uh delivered into the country, all the health workers were trained on handling the different uh COVID vaccines. Please note that we received seven brands of the vaccines with different temperature requirements and uh and different storage uh facilities. Months before the vaccines came into the country, we did an inventory of the cold chain uh facilities all over the country. We in fact uh uh coordinated with uh DTI. And uh we categorized all those uh cold chain facilities as to catering to uh processed foods or just solely for medicines or for those uh vaccines. So we were prepared on that particular uh storage facilities. In fact, even all the L G Us, we were, we asked them to prepare for their uh plans in case of emergencies of power failures or even in cases of uh floods and others disasters, you know? So we all prepared, we have the micro press of all the regions, of all the L G Us in terms of preparedness or readiness in acceptance of all those uh emergency uh uh vaccines. And same is also being done for the routine as well as for the other emergency drugs and medicines. As to the restage of these uh vaccines that we have received from the different implementing agencies, the Department of Health has a commission, a third-party logistics that would uh dispose these uh anti-vias of the COVID-nineteen or even those with still or unopened uh vials, you know? So we have already uh destroyed some of these uh uh vaccines, you know, that has been uh used or unused uh vials, you know? So we have all those mechanisms in place. In fact, we have also focal persons who are responsible for the uh uh storage and even the collection of these uh uh anti-vias or uh reported uh restage. In reference to the W H O uh standards of the restage rate for the COVID uh vaccines, uh, we were informed by W H O that they are still collecting the data from the different countries. What is the acceptable restage rate for this uh COVID vaccines? It's because it's a new vaccine of different temperature requirements and also uh different transport uh uh preparations also, you know? So the ten percent that was referred to is the restage that is being used for our routine vaccinations. But we had a report that, an article that states that for the first year of its COVID vaccinations, it is uh uh acceptable that at least uh thirty percent of its total uh doses that has been procured with uh decreasing percent of restage as the implementation of vaccination course. That's all, your honor. Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, Honorable Maxino?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you so much for that uh clarificatory answer po, ma'am. And uh my next question is, what are our learnings from the COVID-nineteen experience in terms of timely procurement to avoid permitting expiration limits and ensuring availability of appropriate storage facilities from both the private sector and those owned and operated by the government po, uh, Mister Chair?
Uh, brief answer from the Department of Health? Mister Chair, your honors, uh, the Department of Health has really learned a lot with our experience with the COVID-nineteen, you know? So we um ensured the timely procurements of these health uh crucial health commodities by ensuring that uh uh the uh uh the timelines from the moment that uh we uh conduct the procurement up to the award of these uh procurement projects are in sync with what's provided under the law. Meaning, we have uh um provided each uh procuring uh entity's uh participations within the timeline set by law. So the uh that resulted to a fast-tracking of uh these procurements within the Department of Health to ensure the timely availability of these health commodities. Next, um, there is now a coordination between the Procurement Service as well as with the Supply Chain Management Service with regards to the proper uh stocking and logistics for these procured uh items, you know? So once uh the project is awarded, uh, these um uh contracts is immediately transferred or informed. We readily inform the Supply Chain Management Service as to they expect uh to expect the arrival of these uh health commodities to ensure the proper uh handling, warehousing, and logistics. So with that, your honor, I think uh DOH is capable to ensure the timely procurement and um um my um storing, storage of this health commodity, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Maxino.
Yes, Mister Chair, thank you for that answer. One last question. With regards to procurement, Mister Chair, do we have strategies in dealing with competition from other procuring countries in times of global emergencies when there is a shortage of supply of needed vaccines or other medical supplies, Mister Chair? Thank you po.
Uh, Director Gimbarda?
Yes, uh, Mister Chair, personally, your honors, that's one limitation of our procurement law. Because um under our existing law, we are only um um uh making available our procurement requirements um who are available only within the local markets, you know? That's one improvement I think that we will have to work on, on how we can um uh also uh engage uh these foreign um uh suppliers, especially, especially if uh the health commodities that we are uh seeking is not available in the local market, your honors. So that's one, I think, of proposals that the Department of that will be seeking um in the improvement of our current Republic Act nine-two-and-eighty-four. Thank you, your honors.
Thank you, uh, Director Gimbarda. And precisely, I think, uh, with more reason that we need to approve this uh the bill to address the gaps that were, that we encountered uh during the past pandemic with regards to the um, the, the storage uh problem and the wastage that we encountered uh with the COVID vaccines. Uh, anyone from the members? Comment?
Uh, Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Maxino?
Thank you so much. May I move to consolidate the various bills to a substitute bill? Mister Chair, so move.
Second, Mister Chair.
Mister Chair, uh, Honorable Akop. Since no, there is no uh uh violation from the one approved in the Eighteenth Congress, may I move that the concept harmonize uh the provisions or distributs and come up with a substitute bill? So move, Mister Chair.
Second, Mister Chair.
Okay, so there's uh a motion by Honorable Akop and a duly seconded by uh uh Honorable Maxino, Honorable Imano, Honorable Roque, and Honorable Garcia to um consolidate and harmonize the uh the uh bills that are being deliberated today will be uh approved uh bill in the Eighteenth Congress uh, uh, subject to style and amendment. Um, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
The committee will now tackle the second agenda of building strengthening the National Nutrition Council. The committee believes this, uh, proposed measure a priority in line with the Philippine commitment to the attainment of sustainable development goals, specifically the SDG three, which aims to ensure healthy lives and promote well-being for all, at all ages. Statistics show that the state of nutrition in the Philippines is, um, deplorable. Based on the June fifteen, twenty twenty-one publication of the World Bank, undernutrition, for example, has been a serious problem. Around thirty percent of Filipino children under five years of age are stunted. We are fifth in stunting, stunting growth rate. Uh, we are fifth in Asia and Pacific and we are tenth, uh, globally. The same public issue shows that the burden on the Philippine economy brought by childhood not undernutrition was estimated at four point four million dollars, or one point five percent of the country's GDP in, in twenty fifteen. This goes to show that good nutrition is a foundation for economic prosperity and investments in nutrition are highly cost-effective. It must be emphasized that improving nutrition is foundational to sustainable national and global development. Tackling malnutrition will have a wide-reaching consequences for improving health and working to end poverty. To make progress on sustainable development, it is therefore essential to make progress on nutrition. Having said that, while the dream may seem to address the deplorable state of the malnutrition in the Philippines by simply strengthening the National Nutrition Council at the surface, the Chair looks forward to sustained whole of the government, whole of government approach cognizant of the fact that the issue at hand is deeply rooted in structural and social inequities in Philippine society. The Chair shall now recognize the authors who will deliver their sponsorship speech. Um, Mr. Chair, copies of the bills and matrix relative there too have been distributed to all members of the committee. Uh, yes, uh, Honorable Akop? Before we move to the second agenda, uh, may, may, may this representation move that, uh, the members present physically and on Zoom be considered as co-authors of the, of the bill and, uh, of the tributes that will be harmonized. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
So, there is a motion, uh, by Honorable Akop that all those present, uh, physically and on Zoom who wishes to be co-authors of the, the bills on the, the stockpiling, um, be being co-authors, uh, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. May we now call on, uh, Honorable Wilbert Lee, uh, for House Bill number seven five eight six for his, uh, sponsorship speech.
Honorable Lee?
Mr. Chair, if, uh, Honorable Lee is at present, may, uh, move that, uh, his explanatory note be considered sponsorship speech, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, uh, Honorable Imano, um, um, for House Bill number eight zero five one, may we now call, uh, Honorable Midikua for his sponsorship speech? Honorable Midikua?
Mr. Chair, move that, uh, the explanatory note of Honorable Kua be considered as her, uh, sponsorship speech.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Imano. Okay, so take note of, um, the request of, uh, Honorable Wilbert Lee because, uh, he is presently having difficulty, uh, speech. And so, um, he's requesting, he's requesting and, uh, it's already been manifested by Honorable Imano that his explanatory note be considered as his sponsorship speech, uh. So, um, uh, get well soon, Honorable Lee. Lani Mercado-Ribilia, so, House Bill number seven seven six zero for his sponsorship speech.
Mr. Chair, good, uh, morning and to all the members of this, uh, committee. Uh, and due to the expediency of time, uh, I would like to use the explanatory note as my sponsorship speech for House Bill seven seven zero zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Mercado-Ribilia.
Mr. Chair, yes, Honorable Akop? Uh, for and behalf of the Honorable, uh, Michael Romero, uh, Honorable Rufus Rodriguez, uh, Honorable, uh, uh, Maria Lucille Nava, may move that, uh, explanatory note of their bill be considered as their sponsorship speeches. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Akop. We now proceed, we now proceed, uh, with the, uh, comments from our resource person, uh, from the Department of Health, uh, Director, uh, Paul Gimbarra.
Mr. Chair, I think Doctor, uh, Dayang Hiram wants to be recognized.
May we now call on, uh, from the National Nutrition Council, Assistant Secretary and Executive Director, Doctor Azucena and Dayang Hiram.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Doctor Galpo, and the rest of the honorable members of this body, um. I am Doctor Azucena Milana Dayang Hiram, Assistant Secretary and Executive Director of the National Nutrition Council. First of all, I'd like to thank our sponsors, Honorable Michael Romero, Honorable Rufus Rodriguez, Honorable Wilbert Lee, Honorable Lani Mercado-Ribilia and her sons, Honorable Brian Ribilia, Honorable Ramon Jolo Ribilia the third, Honorable Lucille Nava, and last but finally not the least, Honorable Midikua. So, um, today, I have the honor to share with you briefly the rationale for the strengthening of the National Nutrition Council and the accompanying possession of the agency, the National Nutrition Secretariat on the matter. I hope through this presentation, I will be able to clearly emphasize and provide justice on the urgent need for the full realization of these bills. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Now to start, this slide shows the trends of the prevalence of stunting among children under five from two thousand to two thousand twenty. Stunting in our local dialect, bisaya, ito 'yung pagkaputot, and in Tagalog, ito 'yung pagkabansot. Now, looking at the countries, looking at our country's data, kay mga bisaya, may mga putot, no? Looking at our country's data and comparing it with that of other ASEAN countries, it shows that since year two thousand, the stunting prevalence in the Philippines declined by only zero to one percent annually. Now, this rate was relatively slower compared to other lower, lower middle-income countries such as Vietnam with about five to six annual decline. Next slide, please. Now, as the highest policymaking and coordinating body on nutrition, the National Nutrition Council was given the critical role in leading the country's fight against hunger and malnutrition. The National Nutrition Council was created in nineteen seventy-four by virtue of Presidential Decree Number four nine one, signed by no less than the late President Ferdinand E. Marcos. By its mandate, the NNC is composed of the NNC Governing Board, which is composed of ten government, national government agencies, and the secretaries of the departments are the members. And also, the other structure is the NNC Secretariat, my agency, the national government agency, which is the executive arm of the NNC Governing Board. Next slide. So, in response to the concerns on hu- on hunger and malnutrition that continuously threatens or gains on improving the nutrition situation in the country, the NNC Secretariat leads the formulation of the Philippine Plan of Action for Nutrition, or the P-PAN. Now, the P-PAN serves as the blueprint for achieving nutritional adequacy for all Filipinos and the Philippine government's commitment in addressing all forms of malnutrition in the country. Its formulation was made possible through a participatory, intersectoral and multi-level approach involving different partners and stakeholders at the national and local levels, including our development partners. The core functions of the National Nutrition Council are on the formulation of the nutrition policies and strategies to help address hunger and malnutrition in the country and coordinating the planning, monitoring, and evaluation of nutrition programs at the national and regional levels. However, the passing of various other laws related to nutrition have expanded the roles of the National Nutrition Council, calling for the need to redefine its structures and functions to more ably fulfill its expected duties and responsibilities. Among these laws include Presidential Decree Number fifteen sixty-nine or the Barangay Nutrition Scholars Program, Republic Act Number eighty-one seventy-two or the Act for Salt IUD Station Nationwide or the Aisin Law, Republic Act Number eighty-nine seventy-six or the Food Fortification Law, Republic Act, what, ten four one zero or the Early Years Act of twenty thirteen, Republic Act Number ten eight six two or the Nutritional Dietetics Law, Republic Act Number eleven one one four eight or the Kalusugan at Nutrition na Magnanay Act, and Republic Act Number eleven zero three seven or the Masustansyang Pagkain Para Sa Batang Pilipino Act. Next slide. Further, additional assignments were given to NNC Secretariat as reflected in this slide. Despite the limited manpower and resources, the NNC endeavored to attend to each of these tasks, among others, to deliver what is needed. Next slide. So, with all this, the NNC Secretariat humbly expresses its appreciation and support to the honorable representatives and to the Committee on Health for filing these bills on the strengthening of the National Nutrition Council into a commission. Recognizing that the causes of prob- of the problems we face on hunger and malnutrition, especially food security insecurity, are multifactorial, interventions to address this must be holistic and a multi-sectoral approach must be employed. We would like also to bring to the attention of the committee that there are bills filed creating a commission on the right to adequate food, which are currently lodged in the Committee of Human Rights. The proposed functions of this committee are essentially the same with the functions of the NNC. As such, during the deliberation of these bills yesterday, of this bill yesterday, the NNC called for the consideration of the Committee on Human Rights in subsuming these functions to the functions of NNC as part of its institutional strengthening into a commission. This will ensure the harmonization of a whole-of-government approach in addressing matters concerning food and nutrition. In closing, with a strengthened National Nutrition Council comes an increase in resources, both in terms of manpower and financial resources, leading to an improved workforce capacity and ultimately better coordination, policymaking, and implementing functions to address the perennial problem of hunger and malnutrition in the country. That would be all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, um, Mr. Assistant Secretary Dayang Hiram.
Can we ask questions from the resource speaker?
Can we finish the, uh, the resource persons and then you can? May we now, um, here from the Department of Budget and Management, uh, Ms. Jean Kabatana?
Good morning, Chair, and to the members of the committee. As to this particular bill, uh, our technical staff are still in the process of gathering information and data as regards to the proposed elevation of council to a commission. For our initial feedback, uh, in general, we have reservations on the earmarking of five hundred million as stated in House Bill Number eight seven one, as it limits the flexibility of the go- government in utilizing the public fund. In this regard, we are in the position that the appropriations provision of this proposed measure shall be charged against the current years of appropriations of the department agencies concerned. We will be submitting our DBM position paper once it is cleared by our principal. Thank you.
May we know, uh, when can you, uh, submit your official position on this, uh, bill?
We will submit, uh, on the schedule and timeline that the committee would be, um, requesting us to do, uh, probably within two weeks, Mr. Chair, for your consideration.
Okay, two weeks, uh, please, uh, submit within two weeks, um, Madame Kabatana. Thank you, uh, from the Department of Agriculture. Director.
Thank you and good morning, Mr. Chair. Acknowledging the relationship between the National Nutrition Council and the Department of Agriculture.
Uh, nakahang kayo, uh, Director? We'll get back to you later, uh. May we now, uh, proceed with the Department of, uh, Agro Reform, uh, Mr. Romeo Reyes? Director Reyes?
Good morning. Yes, good morning, your honors. Uh, in behalf of the Department of Agro Reform, we'd like to express our support to the, uh, strengthening of the, uh, National Nutrition Mandate of the, uh, country. We are, uh, in whatever way, either in commission or, uh, council, we support the strengthening of our, uh, mandate to our, uh, national nutrition activities, your honor. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um. From the Department of Education? Uh, Madame.
From the Department of Education, po, I'm Doctor, uh, Dumao from the School Health Division. Uh, we'll be submitting our official position paper. However, uh, I'd like to articulate that the, that the Department of Education interposes no objection and fully supports House Bills Number eight seven one five three two nine six five oh one seven five eight six seven zero and seven eight nine respectively. The National Nutrition Council, as the highest quality and coordinating body in nutrition, as all know, is tasked with various nutrition-sensitive and specific programs while dealing with all levels of governance. And the funding shall be allotted for NNC to continue the implementation and expansion of scope and coverage of the nutrition programs in all lives ages. The NNC, if it will become a bigger agency, has a huge potential in investing to school nutrition programs where all the stakeholders can work collaboratively at the local levels. And the nutrition programs in the schools shall be supported by the community and other national government agencies to extend the school-based program in the House for called for continuous learning and impactful programs. When transformed into a commission, NNC will improve the multi-sectoral coordination among schools, local government units and NGOs to strengthen the convergence of programs, projects, and activities on food and nutrition for learner self and well-being. And as nutrition offices are established in every level of governance, nutrition databases may also be strengthened to efficiently target all forms on malnutrition and come up with strategies and policies, monitoring and evaluation mechanisms on health and nutrition. And the technical assistance to be provided by the National Nutrition Council to the sub-national levels would also contribute to the improvement of capacities and capabilities of the health personnel and program coordinators to dele- deliver quality and effective school nutrition interventions for learners. We will be, uh, submitting our official, um, position paper uh, in one week's time, po. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Doctora. Dumao, Doctora Dumao. Please submit, uh, your official pos- uh, position, uh, before the end of, uh, by next week. Uh, from the Department of Employment, um, Maria Revlin Galura. Ms. Galura.
Nakamute kayo. Good morning, Mister Chair and distinguished members of the committee present today. Am I audible na po, Mister Chair? Can you hear me now? Again, good morning, Mister Chair and distinguished members of the committee present today. I am Doctor Maria Revlin Galura, an Occupational Health Officer of O S H C. And in behalf of our Executive Director Maria Teresita Kukueko, may I read to you the position or comments of our center regarding the House bills being discussed today? The O S H C supports House Bills Numbers eight-seven-one-five-three-two-nine-six-five-zero-one seven-five-eight-six-seven-seven-zero-zero and seven-eight-six-nine, rationalizing and seeking to strengthen the powers and functions of the National Nutrition Council, or N N C. With the proposed House bills, we can ensure a cohesive policy direction and creation of an inclusive approach in food accessibility and security, improve the nutrition and overall health of Filipinos that will benefit the working population. We agree with the provisions focusing on consolidation and monitoring of research and in developing the capacity of N N C to be the clearinghouse of information on the relationship of nutrition and human health. This information generated by the strengthened capacity of N N C will benefit the publics of the O S H C in its advocacy to promote the importance of nutrition and health for all workers. This will also create a positive cumulative effect and impact on the workplace. We also propose for the consolidation of the House bills to reflect the common provisions. That is all, Mister Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctora, um, Galura. Uh, from the, from NEDA, um, is Dorothy Camille de Tabali.
Thank you, Mister Chair and all the honorable members of the committee. The proposed bills are aligned with the strategies espoused in the Philippine Development Plan twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight, particularly in ensuring food security and proper nutrition. We recognize that the bill's policy objective to improve nutrition governance at all levels may increase and maximize returns to investments in nutrition by improving convergence of interventions and horizontal and vertical coordination in government. Mister Chair, we will submit our official position with specific comments and recommendations once cleared and signed by our principal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the, uh, physical presence of, uh, Honorable, uh, Mark Go from the, uh, Lone District of Baguio City. Thank you. And, uh, on Zoom, we'd like to acknowledge, uh, Honorable Fernando Cabreta of the Third District of Albay, uh, Honorable Maria Vanessa Omentado of the Second District of Bohol, and Honorable Joseph, uh, Giorgio Lara from the Third District of Tagayan. From the Council for Welfare and Children, Attorney Sheila Valbastro. Attorney Valbastro.
Good morning, Mister Chair and to the members of the committee. I am Attorney Sheila Valbastro from the Council of Welfare for the Welfare of Children. For C W C, we commend this legislative measure which seeks to strengthen the nutrition plan and the program of the country. Thus, we support the intention of the House Bills, uh, Number seven-five-eight-six-six-five-zero-one seven-eight-six-nine-seven-seven-zero-zero and eight-seven-one in strengthening the National Nutrition Council. However, the C W C respectfully recommends, including the Universal Declaration on the Eradication of Hunger and Malnutrition in the enumeration of international commitments of the state under the Declaration of Policy. C W C also recommends aligning the term of the Philippine Plan of Action for Nutrition with the term of the administration. Lastly, for the items under the provision on power, functions, and responsibilities of the commission, the C W C respectfully recommends, among others, that on item P, it should be clarified that the technical assistance will be focused on nutrition since it made mention of health workers. And for items six and seven, uh, to refer to the National Economic and Development Authority on how these provisions on relative to the official development assistance. Nonetheless, C W C undertakes to submit its detailed and official position paper at the soonest possible time. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Valbastro. We will take note of your, uh, inputs. Um, may we now get back to, uh, uh, Mister Romeo Reyes, Director for of the Department of Agrarian Re- Reform. Director Reyes.
Good morning, your honors. Uh, in behalf of the, uh, Department of Agri Reform, we'd like to express our support to all the bills that, uh, aim to strengthen the, uh, some commission either in, uh, a commission, uh, as a commission or, uh, uh, a council, your honors. That would be all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh. Honorable Ako. Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, may I direct my question to, uh, Doctora Dayang Hirang?
You mentioned about the, uh, a certain bill filed with the Committee on Human Rights. May I know what, yeah, what happened to that? Are they, are they taking over the functions of the uh, National Nutrition Council?
Yeah, uh, thank you very much for that question, uh, Honorable Ako. Actually, uh, the bill on the right to adequate food was uh, way back filed in twenty sixteen or twenty fifteen. Um, and then yesterday, they had the, how many times meeting with the committee? Okay, so, um, they said that, uh, in, in structure, the legal framework on the right to adequate food is already approved. But during the committee meetings for the second time around, especially yesterday, we maintained our position that, uh, since the tasks and functions of the right to adequate food, we want to have a commission also. Then we, we tell, we told them, the committee, that N N C is willing and committed to subsume the tasks and functions as we are already here since nineteen seventy-four. Thank you, sir.
Did the, did, uh, the committee agree with your position?
They said that they will, uh, incorporate all our possession in the said, uh, bill.
Thank you, uh, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, uh, a reading or a perusal of the different bills filed, uh, two were filed by, uh, the Honorable Rodriguez. Uh, I think there's only one issue, uh, insofar as these bills are concerned, whether it would be under the Office of the President or under the Office of, uh, the Department of Health. Uh, PD four-nine-one, uh, the, the council was under the, the Office of the President, Amapod Dipuba.
Yes, sir.
And under Executive Order Number two-three-four in nineteen eighty-seven, it was transferred to the S W G.
Yes, sir.
Now, we have the, uh, the bills here. Uh, all bills except for the first bill filed by the Honorable Rodriguez would like the Nutrition Council to be under the Office of the President. But if you look at the two bills of the Honorable Rodriguez, yununa, under the, it's pero yun latest na finalya, it's under the Office of the President. So, Mister Chair, I think, uh, this issue can be settled. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, uh, for the clarificatory question, Honorable Ako. Um, yes, uh, Doctora Dayang Hirang?
Yeah, thank you very much, Honorable Ako. Actually, uh, this is to be candid to everybody. Uh, last November, when we attended the National Nutrition Awarding Ceremony in Region Ten, I was the keynote speaker and Congressman Rufus Rodriguez was also there as another, another keynote speaker. And he fondly said to me, oh, Doctora Asek Dayang Hirang, I already filed a bill uh, establishing the National Nutrition Council within the Department of Health. So I was amazed and, uh, I told him directly, Congressman Rufus, look at our standee, the logo says nineteen seventy-four, meaning to say we have been created already in nineteen seventy-four by, by PD four-nine-one. And he said, oh, so I said, I proposed to him, if gladly you would like to help the National Nutrition Council, why not strengthen, strengthen our agency? And then he filed another bill in December sixth, strengthening the National Nutrition Council from a council to a commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctora Dayang Hirang. Uh, may we hear a comment from the Department of Health? Yes, uh, Honorable Mark Go. Uh, I would like to ask, uh, the, the head of the National Nutrition Council. Since the time it was organized in nineteen seventy-four, how is the nutrition situation of the country? Uh, you know, ano bang ano, just, uh, just a summary, uh,
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Go. Actually, in my previous presentation just a while ago, in second slide, the stunting prevalence, meaning stunting in Tagalog, pagka bansot.
Yes, yes.
In Philip- in our Visayan dialect, pagka putot.
Uh.
And this is not only on the physical trait of a child, but also more so on the brain development. Therefore, the stunting prevalence has just reduced zero-two-point-one percent. So this is much, much lower compared to ASEAN counterparts. Therefore, in nineteen seventy-four, since we are just a council, and, uh, I was still a student that time, seven years old, eight years old. So that was the time that it was created. So the council has a governing board, so they meet every quarter to talk on salient nutrition, food and security issues. And the National Nutrition Council Secretariat, our agency, which is the executive arm of the N N C Governing Board, truly, uh, adopts and, uh, provide technical assistance to deserving or needed, uh, L G U's who are needing our technical expertise. So, time immemorial, sir, as I can recall, the structure of the N N C is just a mean and lean organization. But as time progresses with the various bills being acted or adopted or passed, more so, ang regional offices namin are lean, composed of one National Nutrition Program Coordinator and tatlo lang po ang opisina. Therefore, when I was still working at the L G U as the Provincial Nutrition Action Officer of the Province of Barabasur, also as a representative of the region to the National, um, Association on of Action Officers, I see, we see or we feel that there is no Nutrition Council at all. So this is the reason why, that with these bills being filed today, we are asking your help to really pass this to strengthen and to also ensure that malnutrition will be addressed, not only today, but also in the next few generations of our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctora Dayang Hirang. Actually, uh, to answer the question of Honorable, uh, Mark Go, uh, in short, uh, very poor. We are, uh, uh, we are number five in East Asia and Pacific in, uh, stunting growth prevalence and, uh, number ten worldwide. Proposal is to make it now a co- a co- a commission?
Commission, sir.
Uh, you wanted to become a commission from a council. What will be the structural change of this, uh, proposal that will help in, uh, combating, uh, itong problem natin, uh, itong malnutrition that brings about, uh, yung stunting of many of our children?
Yeah.
Which affect our education, uh, at the same time.
Yeah, thank you very much, Honorable, uh, Go. Actually, from the structure itself, we want to go back to the Office of the President, no longer attached to the Department of Health. Particularly because, one, malnutrition is multi-causal in, multifactorial in causality. It is not just on the occurrence of illnesses alone, but it is also on food insecurity, meaning lack of food on the table. Third, on social protection. This is the reason why the S W D has been allocating four piece funds for our malnourished families. And also, the Department of Agrarian Reform are also helping us, another multi-sectoral, multi-agency. So therefore, based on the Brazilian model, sir, if I may, so, the Brazilian model has reduced the problem of stunting in ye- in only three years' time. They were at the level higher governance, meaning sitting and directly reporting to the Office of the President. And with this, adding or strengthening the National Nutrition Council to a commission, we will be able to increase our budget also, sir. Because this, this time, when we are just under the department or unattached agency to the Department of Health, four hundred million to five hundred million na po yung budget namin year in, year out.
So, well, it, it doesn't mean that when you will be under the Office of the President, you get more budget. After all, after all, all of this will report to the President. The final person who is in charge of everything will be the President. But now you are under the Department of Health, who can really help you, uh, on your, uh, requirements, eh?
As I was, uh, yeah, thank you very much.
To address the problem of, uh, of, uh, malnutrition. Uh, hindi po ba? Pwede namang gawin yun eh. Ang inaalala ko lang, kasi everybody wants to report directly to the President. Ma- ang daming council that would like to become commission. Uh, so baka naman maoverload ang office ng presidente, lahat nagre-report sa kanya.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much, uh, Congressman Go for that. Uh, actually, uh, nutrition really should be at the forefront of a country's development program. So, ngayon, sir, to be honest, uh, konti lang po yung allocation natin and then the manpower. Gayan ang sabi ng ating mga partner agencies who are resource persons online, they said that if N N C will be strengthened, we will be able to help other departments also take care or oversee their functions as regards to provision of health and nutrition, uh, programs. Now, um.
Ang, ang ibig ko po sabihin, Mister Chair, can, can you not do this function that you are saying with your current, uh, structural relationship with, uh, the Department of Health? You can ask for more budget by telling Department of Health that this is the budget that you need. And once we see the logic of this, Congress can consider this eh. Compared to the other big departments, baka naman nando kay sa tail end din ang Office of the President. Samantalang dito, you can be more visible as you see the negative impact of, uh, the small budget of the, of the, of the council.
As I've said, uh, would you respect, uh, Honorable Go? Uh, the intent really of the bill is to have higher level of governance. When you say, just like in the, in the, in the previous years, when Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, President Gloria Macapagal Arroyo issued that hunger mitigation program should be instituted in all departments. So, there's, there comes DBM already, proposal, uh, giving or allocating funds, other departments also. So just like any other countries, they, they have the higher level of governance in the National Nutrition Council. So this time, we are asking, and with the, with the passage of the, with the, with the authors having recognized the importance of having strengthened an NNC, so this time, give us, thi- this will ensure us that the functions really will be strengthened.
Can, can you just not perform your functions as indicated, uh, in, in the existing provision of, uh, the creation of this council? Instead of putting, uh, you know, ito nga ang sinasabi ninyo, you can only be, you can perform this function if and when it is elevated to a commission level. Yun lang po ang sinasabi nyo ngayon, and because of that, you are close to the, to the Office of the, or you are with the Office of the President, your budget will increase, the other departments will listen to you, and so forth and so on. Eh hindi po kaya kailangan ang change natin structurally, hindi 'yung, uh, ano lang. Ang kailangan natin dito, performance-driven ang ano natin, ang department natin, o 'yung council.
Just like today, sir, um, since we have been under the Department of Health, uh, the Chair of the NNC Governing Board is surely the Secretary of Health.
Sino po kay, kanino po kayo nagre-report?
Secretary of Health po.
Secretary of Health?
Yes, sir.
Uh, hindi po ba pwedeng pag-usapan ng Secretary of Health at ang opisina ninyo? Paano nyo may strengthen 'yung function ninyo, at paano madagdagan 'yung budget ninyo? Kesa 'yung pong, uh, i-alisin natin ang commission o 'yung council to the Office of the President?
Uh, we, uh, I have a note here from the Department of Health. They said that DOH is yet to submit a copy of their position paper as they are still consulting with the legal service regarding the possibility of transferring the NNC under the OP. So DOH requests that NNC, uh, what's this? Will emphasize that the position at all, position it will manifest today is the NNC Secretariat's position, not with the whole DOH.
So in other words po, wala pang position ang, uh...
Are still consolidating as per the note given to me just a while ago.
Okay, so if they say, let's say, ayaw namin, they, we want them to stay?
Um, we will still try our best to be not under the shadow anymore of one department, because I've, as I've said, malnutrition is multi-causal.
Hindi, naintindihan po natin yun, it affects education also,
Yes.
the quality of our children, expectado po yan.
All.
But, uh, what is important is the council should, uh, uh, you know, perform its function as mandated by the presidential decree that was organized. To me, it has nothing to do with, uh, whether you are reporting to the Secretary of Health or to the President of the Philippines. Pwede ba mas maganda na yun ang ipokus natin instead of, uh, like, ang problema nyo, budget, oh, so yun ang i-address natin?
Not only the budget, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, Congressman Go, but also our manpower. We lack the man, needed manpower.
Kasi dyan, kailangan ng budget dyan, pag nagano kayo ng manpower. Ilan po 'yung manpower nyo ngayon?
Ngayon po, one hundred fifty.
One hundred fifty?
There are many regional offices, but they really cannot go to all, all LGUs, especially, uh, they need, when they need technical assistance, because we only have five in the region. All regions, except BARM. The BARM has only, uh, JO, job order status.
Uh, well, Mr. Chair, I, I just have, you know, we, we have a bill here in Congress, uh, uh, on the, on rightsizing. I do not know if this is, uh, in line with this, Mr. Chair?
Uh, uh, just, uh, to, uh, to clarify, you are presently under the Department of Health?
Under such agents, agency.
Agency, eh, is this the position of the Department of Health that, uh, you want? Or you, you support the separation of the Nutrition Council from the Department of Health? And now be transferred under, directly under the Office of the President? Is this also the position, the official position of the Department of Health?
As I've said, uh, Mr. Chair, DOH just gave me a note that they are still consolidating, uh, they are still, um, trying to talk with the legal team on the possibility of NNC being transferred to the Office of the President, because just like in nineteen seventy-four, we are actually under the Office of the President.
Mr. Chair, DOH is present, can we ask DOH? Because she's, she's speaking in behalf of DOH, Mr. Chair. So DOH is present, so can we have DOH, or you stand?
That's why I was asking for the, uh, yes, uh, we let, uh, maybe hear from the Department of Health?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, and, uh, NNC is part of the DOH family as, as we speak and the, um, official, the draft position paper of the DOH as drafted by our LLD is also given to Asec Dayang Hirang. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mi- meaning, ano yun, ano yun? Ano yun?
They are still.
Mr. Chair, ano yun?
You know.
Because, uh, you know, anybody could have given, uh, her a paper, Mr. Chair. And, uh, and it's at official, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. The DOH has yet to finalize the position paper. Uh, they are still consulting with relevant offices, uh, with regard to the subject matter of the bill. Thank you, Your Honor.
That is why I was asking, is this the official position? Uh, so the position of, uh, uh, Doctor Dayang Hirang is not the official position of the DOH? We are still in, waiting for the official position of Department of Health?
And this is only the position of the National Nutrition Secretariat, uh, yeah, uh, considering, considering, uh, the provision in the, in EO four-seven-two, uh, which states that the Executive Director at all times shall be able to realign its operations to ensure food and nutrition security as well as, uh, reduce the problem of malnutrition in the country.
Thank you, uh, Doctor Dayang Hirang. Yes, Honorable Emano.
Is the, is, uh, Doctor Dayang Hirang, uh, Mr. Chair saying that they performed better when they were, they were, they were created in nineteen seventy-four under the Office of the President versus when they were attached to the Department of Health, Mr. Chair? Is that what she's trying to tell us?
Uh, Doctor Dayang Hirang?
Mr. Chair and, uh, Honorable, uh, Emano of Pagagayan, um, Miss, Miss Oriental. Um, actually, in nineteen seventy-four, we started with the Office of the President and in nineteen eighty-eight, the Office President transferred us to the Department of Social Welfare and Development, because they see that this is more on social protection. And then later on, we were transferred to the Department of Agriculture, because they say that this is a problem of food insecurity. And later on again, we were transferred to the Department of Health, because they say that this is more on health conditions. So this time, Congressman Emano, we'd like to be under the Office of the President, just like nineteen seventy-four.
So you, you were saying that you were doing better when, uh, in nineteen seventy-four, when you were under the Office of the President? Mr. Chair, um, uh, last question, how much is their budget for this year? The, how much did DOH give them? Allocated? Or the Nutrition Council?
So, um, this year, twenty twenty-three, we have four hundred forty-three, five hundred thirty-eight million.
Four hundred forty-three? And how much do they need? For you to perform your functions? You, you need funds?
Yes, sir.
Not, uh, you need funds, you need personnel, you need to make your field offices work? How much fund do you need?
We will, that, we will submit our proposal, sir, in due time, uh, inasmuch as we have already, uh, consolidated the other positions that we need, especially in strengthening the Central Office. And then second, our regional offices to take care of the nutrition programs of the country, not only in the national, but also in the LGU level, sir.
I, uh, I find the thinking of Congressman Go, uh, eh, you know, to, to follow up the, the thinking, the line of Congressman Go, um, I think the problem is they want to implement more programs and they would be given powers to implement their, uh, programs. And, uh, for them to implement programs, they need personnel. Personnel and of course, uh, operating expenses, a little bit of capital outlay. And, uh, if we create a commission, then, uh, we will now be spending again for more of MOE. Rather than if we will give them additional five hundred million, then they will be able to perform more. Um, that's my thinking, uh, Mr. Chair. So, uh, hopefully that we will be furnished a copy of their proposal on how much budget you really need.
We will submit.
Maybe increasing your budget will hopefully solve your, uh, challenges and you may be asked during the one of the hearings if the secretary will be present, Mr. Chair. That, uh, if there's a USEC or an ASEC, that will, uh, be, you know, will, will look into the nutrition, uh, challenges, because as I was discussing with the, with Congress, with the gentle lady from Batan, it does not only concern the stunted children, what about the adult?
Yeah.
The, the, the pregnant women, senior citizen and many others, uh, uh, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I yield the, the good-looking gentleman on my right.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Emano. Uh, before we proceed, I'd like to, uh, acknowledge the physical presence. I was here earlier by Zoom, but now, uh, here physically, the Vice Chair of the Committee on Health, uh, Senior Vice Chair, Honorable Anthony, uh, Rolando Gómez Junior. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I always yield, uh,
No.
Better looking, sabi niya nila, beauty before brains.
Um, mutual admiration club dito ah.
Um, good morning po. Um, in nineteen seventy-four, sabi niya po, uh, your original office was created.
Yep.
And you said that, um, everything was, uh, going good. In nineteen seventy-four, what law was used to create your office? Was it a presidential decree during that time? So it's presidential decree. And then eventually, nineteen eighty-eight, um, when a new constitution was created, the former office was brought under DSWD?
Transferred.
Okay. In nineteen, uh, we was proceeding, proceeding that, uh, it was transferred to DA and then eventually landed on DOH. Um, in nineteen seventy-four, there was a wisdom why it was under the Office of the President, because during that time, everything was under the Office of the President. In nineteen eighty-eight, with the new constitution, it created a lot of government agencies. And there was wisdom behind putting you under the DSWD. Of course, DSWD was doing the direct assistance during that time.
Food assistance.
Food assistance, and it was their main project or program. The National Nutritional Council is attached agency right now for Department of Health.
Yes, sir.
By its law, it forms the Secretariat, supposed to be.
The NNC.
You are the Secretariat.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. And the National Nutritional Council is a council composed of different government agencies.
Yes, sir.
And as the Secretariat, what do you call your office as the Secretariat?
The National Nutrition Council Secretariat in particular, Your Honor.
Okay, so the National Nutritional Council Secretariat is an attached agency of the Department of Health. The National Nutritional Council is not the attached agency.
Not.
It is the Secretariat which holds office under the Office of the Secretary.
Of the Department of Health.
Or, or under the, um, the Department of Health Secretary. The National Nutritional Secretariat, okay, waits until a policy is formulated by the Council. And the, the policy is formulated by the Council, particularly approved by all government agencies under the National Nutritional Council.
Governing Board, yes, sir.
That's correct. So, the, the, the job of the Secretariat is to implement the policies created or approved by the Council, okay? The Secretariat, the National Nutritional Council Secretariat, would now coordinate with the different government agencies, okay?
Yes, sir.
And if you are going to implement projects under the local level, then you will coordinate with the DILG. Through their help, all local government units will be informed. Okay? And the recourse of the implementation must be definitely the LGU.
Yes, sir.
Okay? My question is this. If you are put under the Office of the President, will any of this change? Will any of the rule of the National Nutritional Secretariat change?
Definitely, uh, it, it will change.
In what way will it change, ma'am?
Yeah. First and foremost, the structure, uh, because we are, uh, the bill states that the creation, this is the creation of the Commission, National Nutrition Commission from a council. And then the Commission is headed by a Chair and two Commissioners, and this forms...
Yes, uh, excuse, uh, because, um, I think, uh, a lot, uh, more Congressmen would want to ask a question. I'll just cut you there.
Yes, sir.
When you formed that Commission, wouldn't you also involve the different government agencies?
Um, at, as a Commissioner, sir, uh, of course, there are still the National Nutrition Governing Board.
Yes.
They can be called
Yes.
anytime when there are pressing issues.
So, it means to say that you will still be dependent on the different government agencies, because if you create an agency with another agency, with the bureaucracy, duplicating its functions and tasks, then we may be wasting money. Not only that, you have to make, you have to be careful not to fall on the pit trap. What is a pit trap? You create another agency whereby you'll find out that coming up with a Commissioner, entire sub-commissioners under you, and you want to reach the local government unit, you need to have arms and legs. When you create arms and legs, then you will, you will create an entire bureaucracy under the Office of the President. Mr. Chair, I would just like to present to you the wisdom behind the National Disaster Risk Reduction Council. The NDRMC was precisely the agency I was describing to you, which you said you are similar. And why is it until now we are still using the NDRMC, which came from a presidential decree in nineteen seventy-two? Or nineteen seventy-three, uh, presidential decree nineteen seventy-three? Yours is nineteen seventy-four. And the Secretariat of which is the Office of Civil Defense attached to a Department of National Defense. Yours is a National Nutritional Council Secretariat attached to the Department of Health. If you, if you that question is posed to the National Disaster Risk Reduction Council, they will just say it's a waste of money. Because all of the government agencies are already here in the Council. And I don't even have to spend somebody going to the ground, because the Secretary of interior local governments would have the people on the ground. What you need right now is a strong leadership in the department as the secret, as the Chairman of the National Nutritional Council.
As the Executive, uh, Director of the National Nutrition Council Secretariat, sir. Um, this is the reason why.
Uh, DOH, they need a strong leader in the Council. Just like the strong leadership that is posed by the Department of National Defense over the NDRMC. Because the leadership in the DOH will give you the policy that you will implement, the policy that you will have to direct to all government agency for its individual implementation. What you want to do is for the Secretariat to become the policymaker and at the same time, become the operating arm. and at the same time, become the operating arm. So, so it, it, you, you might be mistaken, but it is easy. It is very difficult. Why am I saying this? Based from experience, I was once a director of the National Disaster Risk Reduction Council, okay? From NDCC to NDRMC, we specifically just copied the organizational structure of the presidential decree to what is, what we have right now, because there is wisdom behind that. Now, if you are going to create another agency, then the bureaucracy will be fatter and very difficult to maintain. That is just my take, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, uh, Honorable, uh, Vice Chair Gómez.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Honorable, uh, Maggo.
Well, that's, uh, my concern, because, you know, uh, one of the bills here states that the commission will have a person and the rank will be cabinet rank. Then you will have a, to, to assistant or a USECs. So, you, you will have another bureaucracy. Uh, but your function will be basically the same. And you will end up, uh, doing the same thing, but with a higher cost because of the manpower that you need to be able to execute this program.
Yeah.
A council will just set the direction and you mobilize the whole, uh, group, uh, as well as the different other, I mean, other agencies that can help you, DILG, uh, the local governments and other agencies. Now you have a structure already, you can utilize, uh, what you have instead of putting up another bureaucracy. And the misconception is to be able to do this, you put up a, a commission reporting to the president. As a matter of fact, there are so many bills now that they want their council to be uh, organized as commissions eh? And reporting to the office of the president. And uh, to me, that might be too expensive. Another bureaucracy, can you imagine? You will have, I mean, regions again that will be created, uh, and you will have regional director in every, every region. Is that what you intend to do, uh?
Congressman Go, um, actually, the National Nutrition Council's secretariat has already the central office and the regional offices. However, our staff at the regional offices have only, are limited four and three. Three permanent positions and other have four permanent positions, including the National Nutrition Program Coordinator based in the region with a salary grade of twenty-five. Now, basing on the structure, uh, we ha, we are proposing, Mr. uh, Congressman Go, that we have to enhance our manpower, especially from the central down to the regional office. Uh, we have actually computed this one and we will be submitting this to the committee, our initial computation. We have an initial budget based on our budget annually given to us by DBM. And we will be submitting to the committee the additional budget it requires when we have a commission. Actually, uh, here, uh, roughly, we have eighty-six million po annually. Ito 'yung deficit po, kung based on the National Nutrition Council na budget kami ngayon, sir. Uh, meron kaming kulang na eighty-six when it, when it comes to strengthening the NNC from a council to a commission, sir.
Mr. Chair, including MOE, latam. So from what to what? Ano po 'yung expected na ninyo? Total budget?
Okay. Actually, we have only a budget right now, including PS, MOE and capital outlay in the amount of four hundred eighty-three million, twenty-twenty-three budget. So, based on our proposal, we, we lock eighteen, eighty-six million, two hundred eighty thousand, to be exact. To if ever the bill will be approved and we have to hire, uh, additional manpower.
Hindi po, uh, 'yung total budget, 'yung four hundred million you said.
Yes.
With making it as a commission, you added more people.
Yeah.
You now appoint a person who will, uh, be the head of the commission and the rank will be cabinet, uh, rank.
Just like of NAPC, sir.
So, ano nga na, mas malaki 'yun, hindi lang eighty-seven?
Eight, eighty-six million, sir.
I don't think so. How many people are you adding and how many? I don't think eighty-seven, that's only about, uh, nine million, uh, nine million a month.
Yes, sir.
Kulang po 'yun.
Actually, this is for the PS alone, sir. So we will be submitting this to the committee, uh, so that we will be able to, you know, uh, explain also what are these. Thank you, Mr. Go.
Mr. Chair. Yes, uh, are you done?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, yes, Honorable Akop, and then, uh, after Honorable Akop, uh, Honorable Solon. The Nutrition Council is attached to the DOH. May I know the difference between an attached agency and a sectoral office?
Okay, um, in my understanding, uh, Honorable Akop, as an attached agency, uh, our budget is within the DOH. Year in, year out, kasali po kami sa total pie ng budget to DOH. Second, I don't know about the sectoral officer, but I'm only concerned about our agency, sir, the attached agency. And then second, although, uh, ang NSC is an independent reads and awards, we have an independent
Yes.
auditor, so, uh, nanduduon po sa amin. However, may mga programs and projects na kailangan talaga na maghihi ng approval sa Department of Health.
Anyway, uh, you do not know the, the meaning of a sectoral office?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
A sectoral office is an office under the direct supervision and control of the head. Ang attached agency, meron siyang body.
Limited.
Yes, 'yun ang basic difference, no? So, kayo, uh, as an attached agency, meron kayong parang council or 'yung members ng, ano to? Uh, governing one?
Sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, in, in, uh, nineteen seventy-four, you were under OP. What was your budget then?
Uh, I, I, will, I will-
Were you able to perform your job with the budget given you in nineteen seventy-four?
Honestly, sir, um, we have not, uh, resorted to, uh, researching those, uh, people, especially nineteen seventy-four, sir. I was only eight years old that time. So, um, right now, uh, iano namin, sir, bigay namin sa inyo, what is the budget?
Sabi niya, isla ba you do attach agency rin kayo?
Yes, sir, nung nineteen, nung nineteen eighty-eight.
Including sa DA?
Including sa DA po.
And then to DOH?
And then to DOH.
May I know the reasons why, if you know? Bakit kayo parang pinagpasapasahan?
Okay, as I've said a while ago, uh, Honorable Akop, uh, we were transferred to the Department of Social Welfare and Development because of the fact that since the DSWD is the main agency responsible for food assistance, they consider that NNC will be aligned to that agency. And then few years later, again, the problem of malnutrition is high and they said that malnutrition is secondary to food insecurity. So, since the Department of Agriculture is in charge of food production, therefore, nilipat din kami sa DS, as a DA.
Yes, ma'am, uh, in those transfers, what were the, the, uh, legal basis? Meron po ba?
Meron po, mga executive orders.
Executive orders ang pagpapatransfer sa inyo.
Mga executive orders, sir.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, being the chairman of the Committee on Transportation at napakarami po attached agencies uh, doon sa, uh, Department of, uh, Transportation. Ang nangyayari, nakikita ko during the hearings of, uh, the committee, pag 'yung merong board nagko-control, matagal ang decision-making. 'Yun po 'yung nakikita ko doon. So, ang decision-making, it will take time before the board can up, can come up with its decision. So, if there are, uh, issues wherein time is, uh, of the essence, uh, hindi po magagawa ng, uh, Nutrition Council, 'yun dapat nilang gawin, Mr. Chair. Uh, that is, uh, my view, uh, vis a vis the view na hindi dapat mapunta sa office of the president, Mr. Chair. Kasi, uh, maybe that is the wisdom of the, uh, seven authors of, uh, the bills that we are considering this afternoon. Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Akop. Um, uh, Honorable Solon, you wanna recognize? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, me, I'll just be brief. I, I am for, uh, capacitating the, the Nutrition Council. No, because, you know, I, I see what they're doing and, you know, in the province of Sarangani, just to explain a live case study. Uh, we've been trying to beef up our nutrition, especially with the indigenous people and paminsan nakikita namin na, uh, kulang talaga ang, ang, uh, resources, uh, ng Nutrition Council. But they are helping us. We've actually partnered with Zwilig Family Foundation, who's helping us with the nutrition as well. I think, uh, Congressman Bambi Imano knows this, cause he's also part of that Zwilig, uh, group. Uh, I mean, his province. So, uh, to take off from what Congressman Gómez said earlier, I think for a proper, uh, implementation of a program like this, the LGUs have to be involved. In other words, Congressman Gómez said, he mentioned the National Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council and its office. Now, I think it's very successful because it has the regional disaster management office, it has the provincial disaster management office and each municipio has a municipal disaster management office. So they, it's able to implement its programs and, uh, projects quickly. Now, I know the Nutrition Council, I'm not sure if it's mandated, but they say the province of Sarangani meron pong provincial Nutrition Council. Ang ibang municipio namin that is making a dent in fighting nutrition, they have their municipal nutrition councils. But there are other provinces and other municipalities that don't have it, because I don't think it is mandated. So, I mean, it sounds like a big undertaking, uh, Mr. Chairman, but I think if we are really going to make a dent in the serious problem of, uh, uh, malnutrition and stunting, I think the lower LGUs should be mandate, mandated to have a council and office to implement the programs and projects on the national level. So, uh, just to summarize, I am for, uh, capacitating the Nutrition Council. I don't know whether making it a council or, or commission, uh, would be better or not beneficial, but I do believe that we should really increase the resources if they need more people. Uh, so be it. Uh, but again, like I said, I don't know whether bloating the bureaucracy will really be the key by making them a commission instead of a council. So I hope I didn't confuse everyone more. So, thank you, uh, sirs. Uh, thank you, Honorable, uh, Solon. Uh, before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge, uh, Honorable Christopher Yap of the Second District of Sadorlate, who was physically present here. And also Honorable Charisse Anna Hernandez, uh, the Long District of Calamba City on Zoom. And Honorable Maria Alana Samantha Santos of the Third District of North Cotabato. Um, uh, Honorable Gonzalo, uh, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, share my, uh, my thoughts on this particular issue. Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering what exactly is the main purpose of, uh, trans, or changing it from a council to commission? Because I understand, Mr. Chair, uh, and National Nutrition Council is basically a policymaking, uh, body. And of course, I've been reading the proposal, uh, that exactly is essentially the main focus as well. Uh, but not exactly as a program implementer, because the way I looked at it, Mr. Chair, uh, the, it's really the departments, uh, agencies who are supposed to implement the policies adopted by the National Nutrition Council. So I'm just wondering now, Mr. Chair, hindi kayo makakorun ng redundancy ito kung 'yung programa na implement dapat alibawa ng Department of Health, because nutrition is basically a health, uh, component. It's a part of the functions of the Department of Health. Uh, nah, inseparable supposed to be to, Mr. Chair. Pero ngayon, kung kicrate po tayo ng bagong komisyon, uh, simply because gusto na lang padagdagan 'yung resources, pero ang tanong ko nga po doon, Mr. Chair, what exactly is the focus? Hindi ba supposed to be National Nutrition Council? It's to be the policymaking, uh, council that uh, permits all the other departments of the government na may kinalaman po sa nutrisyon. Implementation of sa nutrisyon, but it's supposed to be under, uh, the wing ng Department of Health. So the way I looked at it, Mr. Chair, perhaps it's really about leadership ng Department of Health on this particular matter. Baka hindi masyadong nabibigyan ng pansin, uh, ng Department of Health, 'yung council itself and the decisions being undertaken by the council, hindi po siya na-implement properly. So, pero ngayon, ang nagiging response natin, uh, proposal is to create it into a komisyon, uh, that's my take, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, kung tama ba, based dun sa concerns, tama ba 'yung, uh, proposals na, or tinatahak po natin? Perhaps, Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering what exactly is the take of the Department of Health on this particular issue? Particularly when it comes to taking a lead, when it comes to the countries or their people's nutrisyon. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Salo. Anyone from the authors, uh, is, uh, Congresswoman Alani Perkado Redilla still at board?
Wala yata, Mr. Chair.
Or if not, maybe from the National Nutrition Council, uh, Asec Dayang Hirang?
Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Salo. Actually, Honorable Ron Salo used to be a legal consultant of the National Nutrition Council. Uh, well, as an attached agency of the Department of Health, we are limited to the main mandate and direction of the mother agency. And, uh, the reason why we are proposing for the said bills to be approved with your help. Uh, we really wanted, uh, when we are under the office of the president, we can have more programs, uh, instituted. And luckily enough, um, we do have, uh, programs like, right now, because of RA Republic Act number one-one-one-four-eight or otherwise known as Kalusugan, atnutrisyon ng Magnanay Act. Imagine the first one thousand days population, meaning from the first day of pregnancy up to two years ng bata. Orphan population po ito. Walang departamento na nag-assist ng, to provide ng food and nutrition-related programs and projects in the first one thousand days. And since the passage of RA one-one-one-four-eight, sinabi po nila doon sa section na yon, na that by all means, the Department of Health, Department of Agriculture and the National Nutrition Council should ensure that implementation of all nutrition programs should be implemented from the national down to the barangay levels. This time, same that section, natulitan po ang National Nutrition Council to do or to provide or to, um, design programs and projects, and in particular, the tutokainan. So, nagpo-provide po kami sa mga first one thousand days, especially our pregnant women and our children. But we are limited to certain number of population ng LGUs lang po, because of our limited budget. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh-
Okay, Madam, uh, Mr. Chair. Thank you. May I respond again, Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, you're, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm actually very proud to say that I used to be consultant with the National Nutrition Council. And thank you, Assistant Secretary Dayang Hirang. 'Yun po 'yung concern ko, Mr. Chair, specific this matter. Because, uh, 'yung National Nutrition Council is supposed to be a policymaking body and supposed to coordinate the roles and the functions and the mandates of various agencies of the departments and government of the government. Nangyayari siya po 'yung nag-implement po ng programa. So, this is my concern, Mr. Chair. Kasi nakakorun po ngayon ng, uh, tawag dito, uh, na supposed to be, 'yung program po na yon is supposed to be undertaken by the Department of Health. And the National Nutrition Council, which is the secretariat, is supposed to ensure that that implementation is properly done and to coordinate all- and to coordinate all the agencies of the government, not just the Department of Health, kundi including the Department of Agriculture. But the way it's being proposed now, mangyari eh, uh nandyan na rin po 'yung council alongside with the all the other departments. So hindi na lang po siya magco-coordinate, kundi sasabay po siya ngayon to undertake implementation. So dalawa na 'yung maging function po niya, to craft national policies relating to nutrition, then siya na rin 'yung mag-implement. When I suppose, Mister Chair, that would have been better undertaken by the departments, which have the implementing, which should be the implementing arms. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Salo, Mister Chair. Yes. Uh, 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 yes, Honorable, Honorable Goles, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Representative, Representative Go for uh yielding. Um, Mister Chair, I'm uh, you know, I'm, I'm worried about the discussion because um if I ask no, the N N C Council headed by the executive director um this question, who is the direct boss of the N N C Council? Or you're as the executive director?
The chair of the governing board, who is the secretary of health, is my direct supervisor, superior.
Yes, so which means to say, um uh you, you were, because all the statements that you were mentioning, the reasons why you want to change this structure, uh they're all pregnant with mumi. Um, which means to say that um you're frustrated as the director of the National Nutritional Council. You're frustrated because you want to implement a lot more, but the leadership is not giving you the go signal, or the leadership is not um, um, uh, I, I don't know. Since uh your boss is the policymaker and you are just the implementer, um does that mean to say that there are less policies for you to implement? Uh, share with us why you are saying all these things.
Thank you, thank you very much, Honorable Goles. Um, it's not that uh walang nagawa ang, ang Department of Health. It's just that the mandate of the National Nutrition Council right now is up to policymaking and coordinating functions. And just a while ago, I mentioned about the first one thousand days, which is the pregnant and the children under two years old are orphaned population. No department, national government agency is handling the provision of nutrition and food related issues. This is the reason why Mister Chair, uh Mister uh Honorable Goles, that um since we want to strengthen the N N C, we want to also include the designing, the provision of technical assistance, so all the LGUs, especially so that the critical period is really the first one thousand days.
Yes, uh thank you very much, Mister Chair. You know, as a secretariat of any agency or any office or any council is very powerful. Why? Because you set the agenda, okay? When we set the agenda, that agenda is going to be talked about in any board meetings or governing body meetings. You are actually complaining about yourself. Because if you have that agenda, then why is it it is not put in the agenda during the meetings of the governing bodies? Just like in the M D R M C, if you want to modernize any forecasting capabilities of any agency, which is behind the scope of Office of Civil Defense, the civil defense can actually put that in the agenda to be talked about by the council.
Uh huh, agree.
So, maybe fattening the bureaucracy is not a problem. Maybe, the leadership is the problem. Knowing the fact that your position is powerful enough to set agenda to be discussed by all the secretaries of this government. Ang kailangan lang talaga, ma'am, is to, is to um know the system on how things would work. You have a very powerful position. I cannot understand, I cannot understand that um you cannot set the agenda of implementing National Nutrition Council in any levels of government. I cannot understand why there is no barangay nutrition council being implemented in this particular barangay X, the municipality Y, in the province of Z. That is supposed to be the agenda that you have to set forth and make all the government agencies involved in the implementation. I, I, I cannot understand. If, if you are able to explain why, then uh maybe I will deal to your request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mister Chair, Honorable Goles, uh Honorable Markgo.
Well, uh I think uh we know exactly the position of uh the nutrition council uh and our proponents. May I suggest, considering that uh there are uh.
Mister Chair? Mister Chair?
Ah yes, alam ko na kung san papunta 'yung statement ni Markgo eh. Eh hindi pa po ako tapos.
Oh sige, tapusin mo muna, ikaw muna.
Yung pakiramdam ko, papunta na dun sa kuwan eh, ayun isip ko. Okay.
Mister Chair, uh.
Honorable Ako?
Yes, may I ask the DOH, are you the, the uh uh main implementing agency in so far as nutrition is concerned?
Uh, lumilihin ko dun sa kuwan eh, hindi, sino ang tanong ko ah?
Oh. Anyone from the ways?
Sorry, hon, I'm, I'm here for the local bills, however, there is a nutrition program.
Talong.
Uh, I'm here for the local bills, but I will answer your questions, sir.
Yeah, please.
Uh, as to your question of the main implementer, that I do not know the answer. But the DOH has a nutrition program under the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau. Thank you, sir.
So if, if there's no agency in charge of uh fighting malnutrition, I really wonder eh.
Di ba? Kaya namang siguro, ito mga otos, they are not present today. But if I look at the uh, at the bills, eh, I do not know the reason why. Ito sa kanila, lahat, eh gusto mahanda sa office of the president. Di ba? Eh kasi, kayo nga sa DOH, wherein the, the council is attached, hindi you alam. Eh paano gagawin ng trabaho ng uh council, nutrition council? Sino nagbibigyan ng direksyon sa kanya? Is it the Department of Health? Ang titignan natin, 'yung sinasabi ni Honorable Goles na 'yung M D R M C is kuwan, kasi may military component dyan eh. Oh, alam namin, 'yung kuwan na susunod kami, at 'yung implement. Pero dun sa purely civilian agency, nahihirapan, why? Kasi, kung minsan pag nagse-set ng agenda ang ka-secretariat, 'yung iba-ibang membro, nag-composed of different agencies, hindi naman sumisipot eh, yun ang totoo, ayaw mo lang sabihin eh. Di ba?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and therefore, they cannot come up with a decision. Kaya nga tinatanong ko, sino ba ang in charge ng nutrition problem natin? Is it the DOH? If nobody's in charge, then we're in trouble. Walang, wala nagutos. Headless chicken. Yun lang, yun ang problema eh, sagutin niyo ako. Kasi hindi matatapos ang discussion dito, kung hindi natin malalaman. We speak of leadership, weak leadership of the DOH, but is it the main agency in charge to address malnutrition? You cannot even answer that. Yun lang kuwan eh. Problema.
Mister Chair, I think uh Honorable Ako has answered my question to um Doctor Dayang Hirang. That um but clearly, the Department of Health does not even use the strength of the National Nutrition Council. Why would even the Department of Health only suggest that there is another government or bureau, uh bureau in the Department of Health that is involved in the fight against malnutrition? But in fact, there is an assistant secretary with its bureaucracy that is supposed to be heading that. And the Department of Health mentioned an attached or a bureau with the rank of a director under a program. A program of disease prevention and control. But in fact, that they have a National Nutrition Council with the rank of an assistant secretary as its head.
Baka naman lang palagi kayo absent during, during ano, kaya hindi niya alam.
Um, di naman sa pagmamayabang, sir, ang dami po nating nagawa na po. In fact, I am the scaling up nutrition focal point of the country. And uh in the World Health Assembly this coming May twenty-one to May thirty, I am fortunate enough to be one of the delegates to the World Health Assembly because six of the, in the provisional agenda are nutrition related issues.
And we can clearly see that Doctor Dayang Hirang is very vocal, eloquent in the knowledge of nutrition in the country. Why is it that her presence must not ring a bell whenever there is a meeting about nutrition or anything that is relating to child or mother health care um agenda in the country? Uh, yun lang, uh Mister Chair, ang nakikita ko na, na ang dapat is strengthened is the system within the DOH repertorial. Um, kila, kailangan nam misingin ang mga taga-DOH. You know, Mister Chair, part of the nutrition is the vaccination. Because when a child is sick, then most definitely the child will have a hard time to eat. And since during the pandemic, there has been a disruption in the routine immunization. Nobody, no child or children below five years old will ever go out during pandemics. It is to say, but there are children who are vulnerable to diseases. And once they catch those diseases, definitely, five years will grow up. Malnutrition will worsen. If the DOH in the central office do not see that as an impending threat, then you have to wake them up. Thank you very much, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Goles. Uh.
Uh, Manong, okay ka na?
Uh, Honorable Markgo?
Well, uh, yeah, uh, considering the fact that the questions have been raised and uh uh the authors are not present today, although their bills have been uh uh presented for our discussion. Uh, I would propose, if I may, Mister Chair, that we uh create a technical working group to consolidate uh the seven bills uh and come out with a substitute bill comprehending the discussion that we have uh this morning.
Mister Chair? Uh, if you go over the seven bills, the main uh, the main uh component that's there is that all bills uh, uh uh mandates the, that the uh nutrition council should be or commission would be under the office of the president. Unanimus ilae. And if you look at the provisions there of the defenders, halos makakaparehas. So the only issue that we have to decide on is whether the council will be placed under the office of the president or remain with the Department of Health. Yun lang po ang issue, if you look, a perusal, a perusal of the seven bills, di po ba? The DOH?
Tignan ninyo?
Uh, Mister Chair?
Uh, Honorable Markgo?
Yeah, that's true, but we want to hear the proponents of the measures, why they want it to be under the office of the president, uh Mister Chair. So probably, if we can just have one uh meeting again, to really hear from them. Cause I have a reservation for the under the office of the president, Mister Chair.
Agreed, Mister Chair, no problem. Okay, so, so there is a motion that uh we create a technical working group to consolidate the uh seven, the seven bills uh uh conce- um considering all the inputs that were raised today and also the official position of the uh Department of Health. Uh, and duly seconded by uh Honorable Ako. Uh, hearing no objection, uh the motion is carried. So a technical working group will now be created. May we now uh ask uh Honorable Senior Vice Chair Goles to uh chair the technical working group? Um, even sir, you said that sir, I was going to volunteer myself to be active in that the technical working group. I second the motion, okay. Thank you very much. So the technical working group will now be chaired by uh our senior vice chair, uh Honorable Anthony Rolando Goles Junior. So that settles it. We now proceed to the uh to the local, for the local bills. First is uh bill, House Bill number one, three, two, six. Uh.
Yep, Mariano Hernandez will sponsor it behalf of.
Okay. Uh, so House Bill number one, three, two, six, uh authored by Representative Honorable Daryl Corviera, uh whose uh sponsorship uh speech will now be uh delivered by uh Honorable Iris Mariano Hernandez.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. And good afternoon to you and to the members of the committee, Mister Chair. Kong Dale Corviera asked this representation to sponsor House Bill number thirteen, twenty-six, which aims to convert the Agusan del Norte Provincial Hospital in Butuán City, Agusan del Norte into a level-three teaching and training hospital to be known as the Agusan del Norte General Hospital and Training Center and appropriating funds therefore. With this, Mister Chair, left the explanatory note of um the said bill be the sponsorship remarks of Honorable Representative Dale Corviera. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable uh Ruth. Um, may we now uh hear the position of the uh comments from the Department of Health?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Good afternoon, your honors. The DOH poses no objection to the proposed conversion of Agusan del Norte Provincial Hospital, provided that it shall remain under the direct supervision and administrative control of the province of Agusan del Norte. At present, there is one Level One and one Level Two government hospitals in the province. Transferring the hospital to the DOH shall render the provincial healthcare provider network incomplete. Although the category of Agusan del Norte as a high-dap, low-capacity province for health facilities, the DOH should still provide capital outlay support for uh equipment and infrastructure. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, uh Doctor uh Sena. Uh, may we hear from the chief of hospital of Agusan del Norte Provincial Hospital, Doctor Odellio Ferrer? Uh, good afternoon, Mister Chair and the members of the committee. Uh, with that position of the national DOH, that uh may I uh clarify that you do not support the uh transfer of DOH to uh the um management of uh provincial hospital to DOH management? Uh, you're asking the question?
Clarification, man.
Clarification from say, we're proposing that this hospital will be real nationalized so that uh it can be unburdened of the uh manpower, especially manpower uh complement of this hospital to become a level-three training hospital. Uh, may we uh respond from the Department of Health, Doctor Sena?
Thank you, Mister Chair. The DOH recommends that the hospital remain under the supervision and administrative control of the province to be able to provide a complete healthcare from primary to the hospital level. Because as I said earlier, there are only two hospitals in the province, Level One and Level Two. But that service delivery design of the healthcare provider network provides that the province-wide or the province-wide health system in this case shall have one Level One hospital and at least one Level One or uh one Level Two or Level Three hospital. So therefore, it is not recommended that. So therefore, it is not recommended that one of the hospitals be transferred to the Department of Health. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Dr. Senna. Um. Uh. Any other comment? Uh, Honorable Roque?
Mr. Chair. I move that we approve House Bill number one three two six. Uh, I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
So, there's a motion by Honorable Roque and duly seconded by um, Honorable Garcia. That the House Bill number one three two six uh, be approved, uh, subject to the inputs uh. Uh, from the Department of Health, um. And subject to style and amendment. Hearing no objection, the uh, motion is approved. So, we move now to House Bill number eight zero three zero. Uh, authored by Representative Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernández. Uh, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernández, you are now recognized for your sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Muli po, magandang tanghali sa ating mga committee members and to our resource persons. Um, today, Mr. Chair, I present House Bill number eighty thirty. An act establishing a Level Three General Hospital in the Municipality of Bahe, Province of Laguna. To be known as the Laguna Regional Hospital. Under the direct control and supervision of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore. Um, today I address a critical issue that not only affects my district, but the entire province of Laguna. The Calabarzon region and the nation's overall development agenda. The need to increase our healthcare capacity to meet the needs of our constituents. In his previous State of the Nation address, delivered right inside the chamber of this house. None other than His Excellency President Reverend Marcus Junior emphasized. That the need for a stronger healthcare system is self-evident. Making affordable healthcare for all become a top priority in the nation's investment framework. As a response to this call, I am proud to author House Bill number eighty thirty. Which seeks to establish the Laguna Regional Hospital in the Province of Laguna. A public tertiary hospital. The Province of Laguna ranked fourth in population sites. Currently lacks a public tertiary hospital. And we don't have a DOH-run hospital in Laguna. The nearest public tertiary hospital are in Batanga City. Batangas and the Tres Semillas City in Cavite. Um, which are facing increasing pressure due to the gaps in healthcare services across the region. And the rapidly increasing population. The establishment of Laguna Regional Hospital is a crucial response to the healthcare needs of the people of Laguna. And the entire Calabarzon region. As an apex hospital, the DOH shall efficiently integrate it into the regional referral healthcare network. To alleviate the pressure on other government-owned tertiary-level hospitals in the region. Furthermore, the establishment of this hospital aligns with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. Twenty twenty to twenty forty, which aims to improve access to primary care for Filipinos. And close the gap in needs for tertiary, tertiary bed needs and medical equipment. May I also inform this honorable committee? That a certificate of need has been issued by the Department of Health. In favor of the establishment of a Laguna Regional Hospital. Which are all the more bolsters the need for this legislative measure. Therefore, Mr. Chair and the members of this committee and to my esteemed colleagues. I appeal to all of you to support House Bill number eighty thirty. Which aims to address the healthcare needs of our fellow Filipinos. And ensure that quality healthcare services are accessible to all. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Committee on Health.
Thank you very much, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernández, uh, from the Department of Health, Dr. Melissa Senna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are cognizant that there are fifty licensed hospitals in the province. Forty are privately owned and term hospitals and are under the supervisory control of various local government units of Laguna. We pose no objection to the establishment of a Level Three Hospital with specialty services in Bahe, Laguna. However, we recommend that this hospital be under the supervision and control of the province. We also recommend establishing the hospital in phases. And renaming the facility as General Hospital to reflect its service capacity and coverage. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Senna. Uh, yes, Honorable Roque?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill number eight zero three zero. Of Representative Mariano Hernández, subject to style and amendments, Mr. Chair.
Hello, sir. Second? By second? Okay. So there's a motion by Honorable Roque, duly seconded by uh, Honorable Ako. That House Bill number eight zero three zero uh, be approved, uh, subject to style and amendment. Uh, now we move to House Bill number two seven one five, uh. Authored by uh, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes, Yede Marie Romaldes. Uh, Judas Idre and uh, Honorable Christopher Coco Emiap. Uh, Honorable Christopher, Christopher Son Coco, you are now recognized for your sponsorship speech.
Mr. Chair, uh, my fellow colleagues, resource persons, good noon. It is my honor to sponsor House Bill two seven one five in this committee. Today, together with my colleagues, Kong Judas Idre. And in behalf of our principal co-sponsors, Speaker Martin Romaldes and Kong Yeda Marie Romaldes. This measure seeks to increase the bed capacity of Sogo District Hospital. Paint its facilities and provide its adequate staff to meet the demands of its catchment area. The first district of Southern Lake, the second district of Southern Lake, and the fifth district of Lake. Together with the men and women of the Sogo District Hospital under the leadership of Dr. Jean Marie Reyes Oy. We have provided this committee with the papers and pertinent documents that addresses the need for the approval of this proposal. I will let uh, these documents speak for themselves, but first allow me to defend this measure as district representative to this house. Mr. Chair, this bill is very close to my heart. I have personal experience. My father had had heart attack. And we have to travel three hours to Tacloban. And he died on the road. Di man lang umabot sa hospital, so paano pa kaya 'yung ordinaryong Pilipino? Tulad po ng iba sa atin dito, nagaling sa third-class province, LGU. Alam po natin that the LGU can only do so much to address the healthcare needs of our people. Especially the advent of the COVID nineteen pandemic and the rising statistics. Of those affected with hypertension, diabetes, tuberculosis, and many more. On top of this, my district is calamity prone. And we have a GDA area. As of the moment, mayroon tayong programang in a personal capacity. Na nag-aatid sundo ng mga pasyente. Uh, papunta sa regional hospital every other day. But this is only a ban aid solution for non-emergency cases. I understand that DOH is in the position of supporting the upgrading. But it's quite hesitant to accept uh, Sogo District Hospital under its management and control due to policy. But I know it will be a disservice to our people. O santi here to be the representative without trying to fight for the basic right to life. I also understand the reservation for taking another hospital from the region due to the future establishment of a medical center. But kami po, ay nasa other end of the region dun. The nearest DOH hospital is three hours away from uh, from our area. Even from the nearest point, and this is even measured based on the private vehicle. Ang dami pong mga kababayan nating namamatay halfway through. Lalo na 'yung need ng emergency services that are only provided by DOH hospital. On behalf of the second district of Southern Lake, Mr. Chair, my fellow colleagues, and to our friends. From DOH, may I have the request na, kahit ito lang po, may I ask for your support for the passage of this bill? Maraming salamat po.
Thank you very much, Honorable Yap, uh, Dr. Melissa Senna of the DOH.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Considering that the Province of Southern Lake has an estimated bed-to-population ratio of one is to one thousand two hundred fifty-five. Which is above the ideal. And the province has a projected gap of Level One Hospital beds of four hundred fifty-seven. And Level Two beds of one hundred eighty-seven by year twenty twenty-five. The DOH supports the intent of House Bill number two seven one five. To increase the bed capacity from twenty-five to one hundred fifty. And upgrade the service capability from Level One to Level Two of the Sogo District Hospital in Sogo, Southern Lake. However, we recommend that the hospital remain under the supervision and control of the province. Maintaining ownership and control of the hospital. Shall ensure that the healthcare provider network is able to deliver continuous healthcare from primary care facilities up to the hospital. We also recommend crafting of the hospital development plan. Which is aligned with the local, provincial, and regional health facility development plans. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, just a clarified, clarificatory question. Why limited to hundred fifty if the proposal is two hundred? I know.
The proposal is for two hundred, sir?
Yes, uh, two hundred.
Two hun-?
Kilan ba?
Okay, then, well, then we support the increase of bed capacity to two hundred fifty.
Two hundred?
Two hundred.
So why, why only one fifty? Why are you not allowing them?
So we allow, it's a type. So, we support the increase in bed capacity because there are still gaps of hospital beds in the province. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Senna. Yes, Honorable? Sige, sige. Mr. Chair? Yes, Honorable Ako, one question lang. In all my years of stay here. Uh, pwede ko bang malaman kung bakit ayaw ng DOH na suportahan 'yung mga. Hospital na gustong uh, iinjoy ng bed capacity? Pwede ba, kasi na, nahukulitin na 'yung tenga ko dun sa sagot nun niya na recommended na. 'Yung, it will be supported by the local government units, hindi po DOH. Pwede ko bang malaman?
So we support the increase in bed capacity. However, the operation and supervision of the hospital, we recommend that it remain under the province, sir.
Bakit nga?
Because of uh, the DOH Devolution Transition Plan and also Executive Order Number one three eight, Series of twenty twenty-one. Uh, which provides that there is a limited budget for DOH, um, in view of um, EO one three eight, sir. And also, we already submitted to the BM our medium-term expenditure framework. And also, sir, uh, it's uh, aligned with a vision of universal healthcare. That the province-wide and city-wide health system shall constitute the healthcare provider network. So the healthcare provider network must be, uh, the all facilities owned and operated by the local government unit. Must constitute each CPM, which is from primary care facilities up to the hospitals. Thank you, sir.
In your budget, do you have funds to support uh, these hospitals? Uh, supervised and controlled by local government units?
No, sir, we do not have budget for that. The budget is uh, within the GAO also of the LGUs.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ako. Uh, yes, uh, Honorable Garcia?
Yes, um. Of course, we are cognizant of the budget restrictions of National and our LGUs. But uh, if we always use po kasi the EO. Which uh, refers to devolution and the García Mandana's uh, rule. Parang nagkakanya-kanya po tayo, and I think health should be a holistic approach. So um, every time po LGUs or the representatives propose uh, similar uh, bills. Um. And National has a very standard reply to our proposed uh, bills. Siguro uh, what we should do is try to compute. Uh, based on 'yung indicators natin, magkano ba ang kailangan? Para ma-operate, ma-makapagpatayo, ma-upgrade, ma-operate. 'Yung Level One, Level Two, Level Three Hospitals. And clearly, I think we will all see. Na 'yung sinasabi nating uh, dagdag sa National taxes na natatanggap ng mga LGU. Ay, hinding-hinding-hindi ka siya para dun sa sinasabi ng National na. Sa LGU na yan, kasi may García Mandana's rule, kasi devolve na yan. So I think, no, I'm coming from both, from LGU and National. Instead of 'yung uh, may bill na ipropose, eto 'yung sagot ng National. Ipapasa ng Congress 'yung bill. Of course, appropriations dadaan din to. Baka gawa tayo siguro, Mr. Chenang, magkano ba ang kailangan? Tingnan natin kaya ba talaga ng LGU? Kasi kung hindi kaya ng LGU. Role nating lahat to see eh, ano ba 'yung kailangan natin lahat gawin? Para 'yung mga nangyayari sa LGU sa bawat marangay. With regards to health, matutunan po siguro natin. Siguro suggestion lang, Mr. Chair, kasi. I'm sure marami pa ng marami lalabas 'yung bills na ganito, and kung ganito rin 'yung standard reply. Parang may gape, meron, hindi tayo pagkakaunawaan. At parang hindi rin po maganda sa committee natin. Working with a national agency, lalo po ng health. Siguro request po namin yun sa LGU. Siguro sa lahat ng bills na ipasa, we will clearly see. 'Yung pong budget ng LGU is not enough, but there is a need. So, siguro gawa tayo ng proposal, paano po natin ito ma-address 'yung problema? Uh, bago natin sabihin kanino ba to dapat uh, um, responsibility to fund? Thank you for, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Garcia. Uh, Dr. Senna. Uh, in what condition, if any? Do you approve of an establishment of a new hospital under the direct supervision of the Department of Health?
Actually, sir, there is no, there is no condition. There, there has never been a bill establishing a new DOH hospital that we supported.
So, in other words? Wala talaga? Is there?
Yes, sir.
That prevents you from, from approving?
No, sir, there is, there is no law, however, it is a general policy of the current DOH administration. So, and also, I think in view of the universal healthcare to. To uh, to let the local government units own and operate their healthcare facilities.
So if there is no law that prevents you, then. That's what prevents you from supporting the establishment of a. Uh, hospital under the direct supervision of DOH?
Uh, to support the, to support the healthcare provider networks as provided for universal healthcare. So we, we do it uh, necessary that the health facilities remain under the LGUs, sir.
If the LG cannot uh, cannot by reason of uh, budget. The budget cannot uh, adequately provide for the operation, the management of the hospital. Uh. Isn't it supposed that the DOH should come in?
Uh, yes, sir, there are instances that the DOH through our Centers for Health Development. Provide assistance to LGUs to maintain uh, operationality of their health facilities. However, it is not limited. Uh. Specifically, it, it does not mean that the ownership will, will be transferred to DOH. And also, the support is not limited to providing financial support and or human resources support. And also, the support is not limited to providing financial support and or human resources support. So there are other assistance that the DOH through our CHDs provide, uh, such as uh, helping the, the local government units contract with the with the private sector or through a PPP in operating their uh, their health facilities and also in um, optimizing uh, the operations of the health facility to ensure that the full health uh, reimbursements and other income of the hospital which judiciously allocated and used, sir.
Yes, Honorable Ako, did I hear right na wala ng hospital na susuportahan ng DOH?
No, no, sir. Uh.
Bakit?
I, sir, we, we support all facilities, however, uh, different kinds of support depending on the need of the health facility.
Now, supposing I come up with a bill to establish a regional hospital in the province of Rizal, uh, you will not support it?
Uh, if it's under the DOH, there is a big possibility that the DOH will recommend that it be under the supervision and control of the province of Rizal, sir.
Assuming, assuming it becomes a law, and there's a provision in that uh, uh, bill, or if it becomes a law, that it will be supported by DOH, and it will amend all the other laws na sinasabi po ninyo. Ano, ang mangyayari?
We are bound to uh, to comply and implement the law, sir. So if, if the bill becomes a law, then the DOH hospital shall be established in compliance with that law.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Honorable Ako, uh, for giving us a ray of hope. So, yes, Honorable Roque.
I move uh, for the approval of House Bill two-seven-one-five, um, subject to style and amendments, Mister Chair. I so move.
I second.
So there's a motion by Honorable, duly seconded, uh, that House Bill number two-seven-one-five uh, be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Mister Chair.
Last uh, on the agenda is House Bill number three-six three-zero uh, by Honorable Christian Unabia. Uh, the sponsorship speech will be uh, delivered by, in his behalf by Honorable, uh, Larnier Roque.
Mister Chair, uh, for in behalf of Representative Christian Unabia of the First District of Misamis Oriental, um, for House Bill number three-six-three-zero entitled an act upgrading the Misamis Oriental Provincial Hospital in Hingoog City, Misamis Oriental into a level-two regional hospital to be known as the Hingoog Regional Medical Center, increasing its bed capacity from fifty to two hundred fifty beds and appropriate in funds, sir. For, um, may I move, Mister Chair, that the explanatory notes of Representative Unabia be his sponsorship speech, Mister Chair?
Thank you, Honorable Roque, uh, Doctor Sena.
Mister Chair, the DOH poses no objection to the proposed upgrading of service capability and increase in bed capacity of the Misamis Oriental Provincial Hospital in Hingoog City. As this will aid in closing the gap for hospital beds in the province. We recommend, however, that the hospital remain under the supervision and administrative control of the province. The DOH already has three hospitals in the region. The Northern Mindala Medical Center, which is a level-three hospital with an authorized bed capacity of six hundred beds. The North Eastern Misamis General Hospital, which is currently under construction and targeted to be operational in August of this year. And we have the first Misamis Oriental General Hospital in Medina, which is about twenty minutes away from Hingoog City. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, uh, Doctor Sena, um. Any comment?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable, uh, Garcia.
May I move to approve House Bill number three-six-three-zero? Thank you, Mister Chair.
So there's a motion by Honorable Garcia, duly seconded, that House Bill number three-six-three-zero uh, be approved. Hearing no objection, the uh, motion is approved. House Bill numbers three-six-three-zero is approved. So, uh, are there any other matters?
Mister Chair.
Mister Chair. Honorable Ako, if there are no other matters, no issues to be discussed, may move uh, that we adjourn the meeting of this committee.
Second.
There's a motion by Honorable Ako and duly seconded that uh, the uh, meeting be adjourned. Uh, there were no other matters to discuss. So the meeting is adjourned. Maraming, maraming salamat, uh, members of committee. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And uh, I yes, uh, Congressman, uh, Honorable Ruth Marina Hernandez.
Thank you, Mister Chair, for, ano, for, for your kind indulgence, Mister Chair. Thank you. Mister Chair, I would like to ask lang po. Um, I, I heard Congresswoman Garcia, ano po, asking for DOH po um, with regard doon sa, um, kailangan po na magagastos po na amount para po sa establishment of a tertiary level-three hospital. Did she ask po for that? Tama po ba ako? Sorry po ah, medyo kanina po uh, nahirapan ako with my internet connection, but did I hear it right, uh, Mister Chair? That he asked, that she asked for uh, DOH?
Yes, Honorable, Honorable Garcia, asking for the costing, how much is needed? The Department of Health.
Standard computation for level of hospital and for number of authorized beds, so we will submit, sir, within the day uh, for the needed cost for hospital development.
Mister Chair, I would like to appeal lang po to DOH, kaya po sinabi ni Congresswoman Garcia, we are partners po in strengthening the healthcare system, ano po ng ating bansa. So I hope po that you will keep an open mind naman on this matter. Ano po, and siguro po, you help us find solutions. Kasi po, kaya po, we are asking help, kasi hindi kaya ng pondok ng local government. That's why we are asking the help of the national government, specifically, specifically DOH. Kaya po sana, huwag nilang sabihin na there's no fund for this, because baka naman po, we can help in Congress. Di ba po, it's Congress naman who finds and approve budget of the different department. So, if they will tell us what is the costing or what is the needed funds para sa establishment ng isang level-three tertiary hospital, so you can help the local government, and the, the Congress will help you find um, budget at maalat po ang DOH. Ano po, you, ano, help us find solutions para po to address the health concerns of our constituents. Ano naman po, uh, we keep an open mind on this. Yun lang po ang appeal ko sa DOH. Salamat po, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ruth Mariana Hernandez, uh, DOH. Uh, I think uh, you have heard the statement of Honorable Ruth Hernandez. So, keep a.
And our, our Center for Health Development, Calabzon, will be in close coordination uh, with the province of Laguna, and we will come with Hernandez. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, uh, Doctor Sena. Thank you, uh, Honorable Ruth Mariana Hernandez.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon po. Salamat po. Thank you.
Uh, so again, maraming, maraming salamat, uh, uh, to the resource persons this morning from the DOH, uh, and other government agencies, fellow members of the committee, maraming, maraming salamat. Good afternoon.